Rule call.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Close session report.
Mayor Gardner, there's no close session report this evening.
Would you please stand for the Budget Legions led by Councilwoman Degel and remain standing for the invocation from Mayor Pro Tem Curry.
Please remain standing and join me in prayer. Our Lord God, we, your children, come before you tonight in humility. We ask for forgiveness for our transgressions. We on this council ask for wisdom and judgment and compassion as we manage this city, hear the citizens, and render our decisions. We pray for the prosperity of our community that you will hold in your hand each and every one of our citizens, that you would guide us always, that we would seek your truth in all decisions we make. In your name we pray. Amen.
We have several presentations tonight. The first one is the proclamation designating May 13th to May 19th, 2012, as Poppy Week. And we have Kendall Madsen, the American Legion Auxiliary President, and Ms. Poppy Rachel Hydeman, excuse me. And I will read the proclamation. Whereas nearly 1 million members of the American Legion Auxiliary, the world's largest patriotic service organization of women, are asking every elected and appointed official of the local, state, and national level to wear a poppy on the observance of Memorial Day, May 31st, 2012. And whereas the poppy honors the millions of Americans who have willingly served and who are currently serving our nation, all too many of whom have made the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas the poppy also honors the hospitalized and disabled veterans who make these red-handcrafted flowers. The poppy continues to provide a financial and therapeutic benefit to those veterans who constructed them, as well as benefiting thousands of other veterans and their families by the revenues collected from poppy distributions. And whereas in battlefields of Belgium during World War I, poppies grew wild amid the ravages of war. The overturned soils of battle enabled the poppy seeds to be covered, allowing them to grow and forever serve as a reminder of the bloodshed of war. Now therefore, I declare on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, the week of May 13th and May 19th, 2012, is Poppy Week in the city of Newport Beach, and urge all residents to recognize the importance of the poppy and what it represents, a symbol of the price of war and the sacrifice of millions.
Thank you, Mayor Gardner, councilmembers. My name is Kendall Madsen. I'm the Auxiliary President down in Newport Harbor. And Rachel has a poem of Flanders Field that she'd like to recite for you and then present you with poppy.
In Flanders Fields, poppies blow Between the crosses, row on row, That marks our place In the sky, the larks still bravely singing Fly scarce her amid the guns below We are the dead, short days ago We lived, felt dawn Saw sunset glow Loved, and were loved, And now we lie in Flanders Fields Take up the coral with the foe To you, from failing hands Can we throw the torch Be yours to hold it high? But if ye break faith with us who die We shall not sleep Though poppies grow in Flanders Fields.
Did you wish to say further words?
I'll just wait.
Well, thank you very much for these reminders of those who have sacrificed so much for us. We have a second presentation. This is the Relay for Life proclamation. And we have Peggy Ford and the Relay for Life Committee. Whereas the American Cancer Society is the nationwide, community-based, voluntary health organization dedicated to eliminating cancer as a major health problem by preventing cancer, saving lives, and diminishing suffering through research, education, advocacy, and service. And whereas the American Cancer Society is the largest non-government funder of cancer research, having spent more than $3.5 billion since 1946, and playing a role in nearly every cancer breakthrough in recent history, including funding researchers with cutting-edge ideas early in their careers, forty-four of whom have gone on to win the Nobel Peace Prize. And whereas Relay for Life is the most successful fundraising event in the world, as the signature fundraising and advocacy activity of the American Cancer Society, raising over $4 billion since its inception with over 7,000 grassroots events honoring cancer survivors and remembering those lost to the disease. And whereas Relay for Life began in the city of Newport Beach on May 17th and 18th, 2002, dedicated to supporting the mission of the American Cancer Society in our community and raising over $1 million in its first ten years. And whereas Relay for Life Newport will hold the 11th Annual Relay for Life Newport Beach Event on May 19th and 20th, 2012, as our community will once again come together to celebrate, remember, and fight back by raising funds to eradicate cancer. And whereas at its core, the American Cancer Society is a grassroots force of 3 million passionate volunteers at a national and local level who tirelessly seek to save lives from cancer, working with lawmakers everywhere to make this world a healthier place to live, and rallying communities around the globe to join the fight to create a world with less cancer and more birthdays. And as a result, more than 11 million people in America who have had cancer and countless more who have avoided it will be celebrating birthdays this year. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim May 19th and 20th, 2012, as Newport Beach Relay for Life Days, anchored in hope in the city of Newport Beach, and invite all citizens to participate in the 2012 Relay for Life of Newport Beach at Newport Harbor High School on May 19th and 20th.
Good evening, Mayor Gardner and councilmembers. First of all, I want to say thank you, Councilman, Member Degel and Hill, for the purple. You look great in it. Just wanted to give you a little information about our event this year. This is our 11th year. Last, we celebrated our 10th birthday, which we raised over $1 million. Being our 11th year, we're at the Newport Harbor High School Track on Saturday, May 19th, starting at 9:00 a.m. And then at 10:30 a.m., we'll have our opening ceremonies. And then at 9:00 o'clock at night, we'll have our luminaries. And then we'll end the event at 8:30 on Sunday, 8:30 a.m., on the track with our closing ceremonies. We have a lot of great events planned. We have five live bands, a kids' camp area. We have yoga with the city manager. We have a kids' camp area and an arts and crafts for kids. So we have great events. Now I'm going to turn over to the chair, Peggy Ford.
Thank you, Matt. And I think, Mayor Gardner, you pretty much said everything in the proclamation. All I can say is, if anyone out in the community is able to try to get involved in Relay for Life, it is such a special event. It's life-changing. There's still plenty of time to form a team, come out and participate in one of the many events that Matt and the committee have organized. And it's just such a positive way for our community of Newport Beach to fight back against cancer. So we hope to see you all there. Thank you to the council critters and Mayor Gardner, Keith Curry, and Pam, and the rest of the council. And a special thanks to the city staff as well. They have just embraced this event, participated both at a leadership level with Matt co-chairing and Sean in his leadership on the committee, all the way down to all of the employees that are part of the team. So just, we really hope to see you out there next weekend. And you can check out our Facebook or website if you're interested in more events.
While the mayor's coming back, I would just take a minute to also thank the city staff for their great support, but to also let you know that the city council has been longtime supporters of Relay for Life. And the council critter team this year is fielded. If you don't have a team, feel free to go on the website and support the council critters. We would love to see you out there in the next weekend after next. And it's going to be a great weekend, as it always is. Thank you.
And I think I see Chief Poster, and I think you have an introduction for us.
Mayor Gardner, councilmembers, city staff, and people in the room. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing the newest member of the fire department. He was selected from a field of excellent candidates competing for the position. The list was narrowed to a select group, all of whom I interviewed. Kevin Kitch has been added to my executive team as the Assistant Chief of Life Safety Services, where he will provide leadership to our fire prevention, community education, disaster preparedness staff. He started on April 23rd and has been diligently working to familiarize himself with his new department. Chief Kitch brings to Newport Beach 30 years of extensive experience from the city of Poway, where he advanced through the ranks to Division Chief. He has served as the Director of Safety Services, Chair of the San Diego County Public Safety Wildland Pre Fire Program, and managed Poway's Wildland Defensible Space Program. Chief Kitch's ties to public safety began as an ocean lifeguard for the city of San Diego many years ago. Chief Kitch's educational background includes a Master of Science in Emergency Services Administration from Cal State Long Beach, a Bachelor of Science in Biological Sciences from UC Davis, and Associate of Science from the Miramar College, along with numerous fire certifications, including Chief Officer, Fire Marshal, Building Code Official, and Fire Code Official. Chief Kitch is characterized as having strong people skills, excelling in collaborative efforts with diverse professionals and community members. His personal commitment is to enhance community involvement and customer service by building accountability and delivering a positive, financially responsible result within all levels of the city and community. This past week, Chief Kitch has been busy meeting with the staff in his division to review ongoing programs and projects, and getting up to speed on his areas and responsibilities. He's looking forward to getting out to the stations to meet the fire operations staff and is excited about the opportunity to serve and support Newport Beach. Chief Kitch is married with two children, one at home and one out of the house. He is temporarily residing in Long Beach with a friend, while his wife Lonnie is handling things in Poway until they can relocate. I'd like to introduce Chief Kitch.
Mayor Gardner, member of council. It is a great opportunity for me to introduce myself to you, and hopefully through the years to follow that we get to know each other. And I'm very excited about the opportunity to work for you, for the community, for Chief Poster in particular. Thank you to the chief for selecting me. It's an incredible opportunity for me. I look forward to serving with integrity. I look forward to serving with compassion. And I look forward to the challenges and the opportunities that this incredible community presents, not just in terms of life safety, fire service, but just in general, the community, the involvement. We just saw the Relay for Life and all that energy and excitement that is brought forth. And I see this everywhere that I turn, not only in City Hall, but in the community. It's an outstanding opportunity. Looking forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Look forward to working with you. Notice to the public.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for council announcements or matters which council members would like place on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Councilman Hill.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Rosansky.
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Curry.
A couple of things. First of all, I was fortunate to join the mayor and some of my colleagues for the annual scholarship breakfast sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, and also to fill in for the mayor and welcome some folks to our city during the course of several events during the film festival. We had more than 50,000 people in Newport Beach for the film festival, spending millions of dollars, and I think really enjoying a wonderful week of quality entertainment. I was also pleased to attend the Youth Employment Services Dinner at the Oasis Center and congratulate them for the fine job that they do in encouraging youth employment throughout our city, and the KOC Radio Fundraiser, which happened at the American Legion this week. In addition to that, along with Councilmember Hen, and in one case with Councilmember Degel, I attended the opening of the Lido Island Yacht Club and the Newport Harbor Yacht Club, which is truly a great Newport experience as we kick off another great year on the water. Thank you.
Councilwoman Degel.
Yes, I attended the Fourth Annual Crime Victims March and Rally, which is held at the county courthouse. And it's put on by our district attorney, Tony Rukakis. And as he explained to the audience, one of the most horrible things that can happen to a family is when they receive a phone call or a knock on the door that someone in their family has been murdered or is the victim of a crime. And so they had testimonials from victims, and many of whom have gone from fear and anger to courage and solutions, and have become fierce advocates for enhancements in the criminal justice system. And he cited a number of examples, Marcy's Law, Megan's Law. You know, all of those were driven by terrible crimes. So I thought the district attorney demonstrated a lot of leadership. And the few times that I've spoken with him, he's never missed an opportunity to say something positive about the Newport Beach Police Department, and particularly references the Hox murder that happened several years ago in our community, and how our police department did such a thorough job with the investigations that inevitably made several convictions possible. So it was a ceremony that was also attended by our Assistant Police Chief, who is new. We also have a new Assistant Police Chief, as well as one of the lieutenants of our department. And then, as mentioned, the Newport Harbor Yacht Club opening was wonderful once again. And this year, it's particularly meaningful because of our new dredging project that's going to be beginning very soon here. And it's been a long time coming, about 70 years. And having gone back to Washington, D.C. several times with the city manager, really our message had carried appeal and weight that I think convinced the federal government that, first of all, it is their responsibility. It's a federal navigation channel. It's also part of a system of harbors throughout California where we balance regional recreational load. We're also a gateway to the Pacific Ocean. And it's something that provides, additionally, we have a United States Coast Guard Station. So for all those reasons, you know, we are initiating the dredging of our harbor. The federal government put in the first couple million. I'm not sure how much more they'll be there for us, so we're probably going to have to consider ways to shoulder the additional burdens. But it was a wonderful ceremony, and I think this weekend is the Balboa Yacht Club has their opening day. So I look forward to that as well. So, thank you.
Councilman Hen.
Just two quick things. The Balboa Village Citizens Advisory Panel meets on Tuesday, May 15th, at 4:00 p.m. down at the Nautical Museum. We'll be considering the first draft of an implementation plan stemming out of the series of meetings that we've had to redraw the vision for that area, and also the governance and economic development incentives to help revitalize the Balboa Village. And then the Tidestones Management Committee meets on Wednesday, May 16th, at 4:00 p.m. at the Oasis. And we always have a great agenda of important things to talk about at that committee. So I invite all members of the public to attend either of those meetings, as you wish. They, I think, are very worthwhile. That's it.
Councilman Selich.
Just one quick announcement. Sunday, May 20th, is the 2012 Balboa Island Art Walk from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. It's along the South Bay Front Promenade on Balboa Island. It's the premier showcase for talented local artists, and it marks the start of Balboa Island's summer season. The show features artists exhibiting paintings, fine jewelry, blown glass, sculpture, and photography. There'll be live music along the boardwalk. I think there's going to be about seven groups playing. Mission is free. That's May 20th, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. along the South Bay Front Promenade of Balboa Island.
This Saturday, May 12th, we have the first mayor's walk. We'll be leaving from the Oasis at 9:00 a.m. and getting back there around 10:00 p.m. No, just kidding, 10:00 a.m. We're going to look at a few projects that the city's done, and it's a chance to talk to me, bring up the things you like or don't like about the city. If you're not up to walking, you can just be at the Oasis at about 10:00, and we'll have refreshments at times. So I invite you all to attend that. Then I have a question for our Public Works Fellow. I was riding my bike across the Croninamar Footbridge today, and this woman quite indignantly told me, "You're supposed to walk your bike." And so, on the way back, I looked for a sign, and I finally found one sign. I'm going, this time, I'm going towards the ocean. I found one sign, but it was, I mean, it was like quite a ways to the side. And if I hadn't been looking for it, I wouldn't have seen it. So then when I got to the other side, the ocean side, I stopped and looked. There's no sign at all that says "Walk your bike." So if we do want people to walk their bike, I don't think they're like me. I mean, I just didn't know. And that's embarrassing when you're the mayor. All right, thank you. Consent calendar.
All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items 1 through 8 are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Councilmembers have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council staff or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Councilman Hill.
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Rosansky.
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Curry. Councilwoman Degel.
I have none.
Councilman Hen.
I have none for me.
Councilman Selich.
No items.
And I have none. Staff, the staff have any? No. All right. Is there a member of the public who would like to remove any item from the consent Seeing no one, may have a motion.
I move the consent calendar.
I move the consent calendar, items one through eight.
Second.
Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item three, ordinance number 2012-12, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach repealing Chapter 10.62 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code pertaining to vehicle address solicitation. With that, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And now, time for public comments on non-agenda items. Is there any, yes, so any public comment on an item not on the agenda? Please come forward. There's, somebody has to start.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Honorable Mayor Nancy Gardner and city council members. And first, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak here this evening. My name is John Carr and I'm the Southern California Volunteer Representative for our national motto, "In God We Trust." This was founded by Jackie Sullivan up in Bakersfield. She is also a city councilwoman. And what I'm here for this evening is to respectfully and humbly ask you to at least consider putting on your next agenda, our national motto. You probably have the information, but back in 1956, our Congress adopted the "In God We Trust" as our national motto. President Eisenhower signed it into law. And just this past October, or November, excuse me, our own Congress just reaffirmed this as our national motto. And they encouraged all the government buildings in the United States to display our national motto. I'm very proud to say I'm a longtime resident of Orange County. And Orange County happens to be the leading county in California and one of the leading counties in the entire United States. And back years ago, NBC did a survey and 86% agreed and affirmed our national motto. I was proud to be here tonight for the Papiot Organization and they too are a patriotic organization. The "In God We Trust," our national motto, is a patriotic issue, not a religious one. So anyone that is a part of our citizenry and all of the elected officials that were in the survey agreed that this should be our national motto. I would like to humbly, respectfully request and encourage you to at least put this on your next agenda and I hope that you will do so and I hope that you'll consider voting yes in displaying our national motto in the city council here in Newport Beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there other public comment?
Hello, Mayor Gardner and council members. My name is Tony Armijo and I am, I live in Huntington Beach, but I do business here in the summertime in the Balboa Fun Zone. And what I'm bringing to you today is, there's a regulation, oh, by the way, I already brought this issue up with, I believe he's a member, he's a good friend of mine, Roy Engelbrecht, I believe he's a member of the Parks and Rec Committee? And he looked into this for me and someone from the Parks and Rec Committee sent him an email, it came back to me, and this regulation, 10.08.030, was referenced. And this is regarding my desire to do business at the McFadden Square area, specialty retail. I've been doing specialty retail for 13 or 14 years at Universal Studios. I currently have a place on Main Street in Huntington Beach. I've done it successfully at other major malls. And I know that it's prohibited right now to bring RMU or retail merchandising unit to that area, but I know it'd be very successful. It would add to the venue, to the visitor's experience. It would, there's a financial interest to the city. There's economic gain that would be realized by the city in addition to my business. I'm willing to purchase the carts and bring them to McFadden Square and then do a revenue share with the city. So I just wanted to bring this up and then maybe get the email addresses for all the council members and the mayor and give you some details. Because I know, I think it's only three minutes that I'm supposed to talk up here and I've probably already used my three minutes up.
No, no, we have a hook that takes you when your time's up.
Oh, so this is what, I don't remember the person's name that got to Roy, but I was told I had to bring it up to you guys, so that's why I'm here.
All right. If you go to the city's website, you'll find our emails.
Okay.
Addresses.
And so I don't know, is that the next step, to contact you guys by emailing this?
To see if there's any desire to bring something like this forward, that would be a good step.
Okay. And I could, any questions you have about it, any objections or issues, I'd be glad to address those, be it email or through personal phone calls after that.
The assistant city manager's giving me the devil eye, yes?
Okay.
Actually, there's a young lady in the back that will talk with you in the back.
Okay. And thank you for your time and I don't know if I'll be up here talking again about it, but if so, I'll be looking forward to that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there other public comment?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Gary Belt. I am living in Newport Shores. This is the first time I've addressed you, but thank you for hearing me. The Newport Shores area is interested in the dredging of the slough and I understand from the Army Corps of Engineers that they are to begin in September. And I wanted to make sure that the permitting process for the slough got sub-budgeted for because I understand it's eighth on the budget list of priorities and we'd like to move it up towards the top. It's a program that was promised years ago and it has slipped by. And what I think of this slipping, I think of the promises of shovel-ready. Well, it didn't turn out to be shovel-ready apparently because the permits have never been submitted. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other public comment?
Good evening, Mayor Gardner and members of the council. My name is Nancy Skinner, live in Newport Beach, and I want to talk about the dredging too. I came here tonight because I'm aware that one of your most wonderful staff members, Chris Miller, has been very involved in it. And Councilwoman Degel, this is not to take away from you, getting the money is the key thing, but Chris is the one that has implemented and worked very hard and has done an exceptionally good job with a very difficult task. So I wanted to publicly do a shout-out to him and also let you know, I think you have terrific staff. But while I'm sitting here, I was listening to a previous speaker talk about the request for the "In God We Trust." And I would like to actually say to you, I hope that you will actually not agendize that. That doesn't mean we don't like the motto, we think it's just fine, but I, you know, we had a little situation with the Ronald Reagan statue and I see a similar type of problem with that particular issue, so I kind of hope that maybe you won't get into that because that other one tended to divide our community and I don't think that's the way we should do it. I know that people have different perceptions of various things. Some might think it's political, some think it's religious, some people probably are offended by something that might affect their own personal faith, I don't know. But, you know, when it was brought up before, somebody had seen it on the city council television before and I just happened to be talking to them and they said, "Oh, my goodness, I'm going to certainly get involved in that issue." So I just wanted to say, I hope that you will not do that. I personally have a great faith in God, but I don't really need it on the wall to remind me. It's something, I think it's sort of a private thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there other public comment? Seeing none, we will now have oral reports from the city council. Councilwoman Degel?
Yes, I sit on the Airport Land Use Commission and at our last meeting, we evaluated the airport environs plan for Fullerton Airport. And one of the issues that is common around airports is compatibility with residential areas. So the commission did support the recommendations of the city of Fullerton in approving the plan. So, thank you.
Councilman Hen?
Yes, one committee report, the Balboa Village Citizens Advisory Panel met on Tuesday, May the 2nd. And the sole purpose of the meeting was to review the brand promise and brand vision information that has been developed for the village. This information was developed on the basis of some very solid and professionally done consumer survey work. And the idea is to use that factual basis to develop the vision and the brand for Balboa Village. Some interesting things came out of that. About a third of the visitors that were polled thought that Balboa Village was on Balboa Island. So that tells us that we have some identification work to do. And we also found that the name recognition for the words "Fun Zone" was very high and there's a lot of equity in that. And so that ought to help us in terms of identifying that area and perhaps where it is. And we learned that we really need to broaden the view of what constitutes the Fun Zone going beyond the just half a block area right on the water there on the boardwalk to encompass more broadly the Balboa Village area. This will all be formulated into a revised statement of vision. And next meeting on May the 15th, we will be considering that as a part of the implementation plan for Balboa Village. So we're moving right along on the work plan for that group. I'm very happy with the progress and I'm hopeful that we'll be maturing some specific recommendations before very long now to both the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee and then ultimately, city council for action. Thank you.
Councilman Selich?
Sounds like Balboa Island's been doing a good job marketing. No reports.
Councilman Hill?
No reports.
Councilman Rosansky?
No reports, thank you.
Mayor Protem Curry?
The Finance Committee met yesterday and received a briefing on the budget. Most of that was also presented today during the study session, but we also were advised that the city has the opportunity to combine several of our assessment districts and to refund the outstanding debt on those assessment districts, number 68, 69, 70, 74, 75, 78, 79, 82, 86, 92, 99.2, or 99-2, and 101. Basically, everything except Assessment District 100 where they already have very low interest rates. The refunding of this debt will result in a savings on the tax bill of between $91 and $704 per parcel. So that's a very significant savings to homeowners who live in one of those assessment districts. And kudos to our staff and our consultants for taking advantage of the low interest rate environment to refund these bonds, do it in a collective way so that we reduce our cost of issuance and share them and lower the assessments that we have on people's tax bill. Thank you.
Thank you. And now to our public hearings. First is the substantial amendment to Community Development Block Grant action plans for fiscal years 2010, 2011, and 2011, 2012.
Mayor Gardner and members of the city council, this is a public hearing to consider a proposed major amendment to the Community Development Block Grant program. Specifically, we're looking at canceling two prior programs that were 2010 and 2011. There were two programs. One was the grant program for underground utility districts. There's really been no participation in that program. We had a few applications and no one went through the entire process. We had less than, we had less than 10 applications. We don't have any active districts that are happening right now, so we don't anticipate a need at this time. So there is about $65,000 there. The second activity was last year's program. It was about $8,800 to do accessibility improvements citywide. That's really too small of an amount to do anything with, so this particular item would cancel these two programs and then we would reprogram those funds, which is about $75,000, with the current year action plan, which is item number 10 on the agenda, which is the next item. So, again, this is a public hearing and we do recommend approval of the substantial amendment.
Any questions for staff? Is there a member of the public that would like to comment on this issue?
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. With respect to the cancellation that Mr. Campbell is recommending of the program for assisting low-income households with the cost of undergrounding, I noticed on the final page of the report, which is handwritten, page nine, it says that there were applications for this program, at least four of which appeared to qualify for the program, but somehow the documentation was never completed. So I'm just wondering if the city staff actually reached out to these people to assist them with the documentation so they could complete it or just left them on their own and that's why the program is unsuccessful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Gardner, we did have a consultant work with these applicants. We asked them for additional documentation of their income to verify that they were the appropriate income category and they were repeatedly asked and they never submitted the documentation, so we believe that was just, maybe they didn't actually qualify or they were just not interested in pursuing it. So, again, we had no other applications, so.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment on this issue? I'll bring it back to council.
Second.
Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the resolution title, Resolution Number 2012-30, a resolution of the city council of the city of Newport Beach approving a substantial amendment of the Community Development Block Grant 2010, 2011, and 2011, 2012 annual action plans. The motion carries unanimously.
All right, and now Community Development Block Grant Fiscal Year 2012, 2013 Action Plan.
Mayor and members of the city council, this is the Community Development Block Grant Action Plan, which is really establishment of the budget for the block grant program for this fiscal year that we're coming into, starting July 1st. We did solicit requests for proposals for public service agencies and that's a component of the budget. The overall program budget is about $350,000, a little over that. We are limited to spending only 15% of those funds on public services. We don't have to, but those are priorities that are established within our five-year consolidated plan. And there is also a statutory cap of 20% on program administration, so we're actually a little bit below that. It also includes for housing services. The bulk of the funding would be for our Section 108 loan program, which is paying off a loan for the improvements in Balboa Village. And all of those numbers are on the table on handwritten page number four. We did provide public notice in accordance with applicable law here, it's a 30-day public notice. We haven't really received any additional comments regarding the proposed allocations. We do have one new public service this year and that's the Youth Employment Services for the Harbor Area to provide youth employment services, so we made some minor adjustments to the others. But again, we did get some feedback from AgeWell Senior Services. They would, of course, like a little bit additional funding. In fact, all these agencies asked for a heck of a lot more than what we were able to give out this year. But beyond that, we really only have that one new program. I'm available for any questions that the council may have. We have also representative of LDM, which is our consulting service who assists staff in administering the program. And the last item that's really a part of this is to authorize an extension of their contract for the third year. Next year, we're going to go out to bid on a new consulting contract. But if there's any questions that you may have of me or of LDM, we're happy to answer them.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem Curry?
So as relates to the public services component, we capped at basically $52,600, that's the maximum we could spend in that category, please, please agencies.
Yes, it is.
Councilwoman Degel?
What's the general trend that you see with community development block grants in terms of allocation for future years?
Well, the funding cycle kind of goes up and down. We've been basically in the $325,000 to $360,000 range each year. It's a little bit different depending upon what the Congress allocates. I think every year, we're looked at potential cuts. This year, we were potentially looking at a 12% cut. It's hard to really gauge what the trend will be, it's really up to the Congress to establish it, but it may go down in future years as the budget gets tightened.
As far as program administration, we can spend 20%. I notice we're very close to 20%. I would urge staff to be as frugal as possible with our administration costs so that we have as much money as possible for the recipients. And I know we want to cover our costs, but...
And I know we want to cover our costs, but let's not, that's not, just because it's 20%, let's not just take the 20%.
Understood.
Councilman Hill?
What's the age of the debt?
Well, the loan was taken out in 2003, and it matures in 2023. It's a 20-year loan.
Councilman Diggle?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Wait.
Any other questions? All right. Is there a member of the public that would like to comment on this item?
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, this is sort of the same comment. As Mr. Campbell said, there has been a notice on the front of the City Hall that the hearing was going to be held here tonight for 30 days. The notice has been out there. No comments were received, no comments ever are. Aside from me, nobody ever comes to speak about this. And yet, I see on the second page of the staff report, page three, that citizen participation plan is a, apparently a major component of how the federal government expects these grants to be distributed. And I'm just thinking, maybe, as you said, we should be spending less on administration and particularly on consulting, and spending more money on, on the public outreach and awareness so people know that what's not being spent on the loan is available, and who could qualify for it might appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this issue? I'll bring it back to council.
I would move the staff recommendation.
Second?
Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the resolution title, Resolution Number 2012-31, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach Approving the Annual Action Plan, which is part of the consolidated plan and the projected use of community development block grant for fiscal year 2012, 2013, and superseding all previous resolutions which are inconsistent therewith. The motion carries unanimously.
All right. And now, we have the appeal of denial of a lot merger to merge 2808 and 2812 Ocean Boulevard.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gardner. Good evening, members of the council. This is an item that has been before you previously, and it's also been at the Planning Commission, and it started with the zoning administrator last September. We have given several staff presentations on the proposed lot merger located in Corona Del Mar. We have this evening a staff presentation that is brief if the council wishes to hear it. I think we've gotten to a point where we have a recommendation from the Planning Commission as to what some additional development standards may be appropriate if the council wishes to proceed with a lot merger. We have what the applicant has proposed as their additional restrictions that they are voluntarily proposing. And then, we have a comparison to the zoning code as to the difference between the three different scenarios. So, we do have that information, and we can give a brief overview of that.
Please.
And I do know that the applicant, who's also the appellant in this case, does want to make a presentation to council. I also do want to bring to your attention that we have distributed a redline version of the resolution if council were to consider approving the lot merger, and we can go into details later in this evening as to what those changes involve.
All right. Thank you.
So, with that, I'll turn it over to Kay to give a brief overview of the project.
Good evening, mayor, and members of the council. The subject properties, 2808 and 2812 Ocean Boulevard, are located in Corona Del Mar on the inland side of Ocean Boulevard between Goldenrod and Heliotrope Avenues. At the January 24th, 2012 City Council meeting, at the request of the applicant, the council referred the matter back to the Planning Commission for the purpose of reviewing voluntary alternative development standards to be proposed by the applicant. At the March 22nd, 2012 Planning Commission meeting, the commission heard the applicant's proposal and voted to recommend approval of the lot merger, subject to further restrictions to the maximum height and floor area. This table compares the city's development standards with the applicant's voluntarily proposed standards and the Planning Commission's recommended standards. As you can see, the city's development standards are in the first column or second column there, and then Planning Commission recommendations and the applicant's proposed alternatives. I'll leave this slide up for the rest of the presentation. The owner of the property, Mr. John Guida, is here with Ms. Corley Newman from Government Solutions to make a presentation to the commission and answer any questions you have, may have of them. And Ms. Brandt would like to also make comments.
Do you wish to make your comments now?
Mayor Gardner, I'll wait until after the conclusion of this.
Does the city attorney wish to preface any presentations yet, or do you wish to hold your comments also?
I'll hold my comments for now. Thank you, Mayor Gardner.
All right. Then, we will hear from the appellant.
Good evening, mayor, and members of the Newport Beach City Council. My name is Corley Newman, and I am a principal with Government Solutions, and we are located at 1 San Joaquin Plaza here in Newport Beach. I am representing the applicant, Mr. John Guida, and he is joining me this evening also.
How long will your presentation take?
Probably 15 minutes. I haven't timed it, but.
Is that, all right with everyone? All right.
Thank you. Also with us this evening, we have Robert Sinclair of Sinclair Associate Architects, and he will be assisting me in the presentation, and Andrew Patterson and Jake Winkle from the Patterson Group. Both firms are local Newport Beach firms, we're proud to say, and they're located just a couple of blocks away from City Hall. Our attorney is also with us if we do need any legal clarifications. One point of clarification that I would like to ask staff was, are self-imposed restrictions given to the council already, or is that coming at a later part of the?
They have been distributed.
Okay. Thank you. As you, as staff has noted, we've been working on this diligently with the community since September of last year. And in that process, we realized that what was important was to put some self-imposed restrictions on this lot merger that we would be putting forth ourselves as the applicant. In doing that, in the self-imposed restrictions that are in front of you this evening, we have agreed to lower our floor area level from 1.5, the city requirement, to 1.0. We have, we agreed to restrict our height, and we've agreed to additional side yard setbacks, which would make this merged lot the same as if the lots were individual, because that was one of the big concerns in previous testimony. Then, that added four feet in our side yard setbacks. So, we stand here this evening before you with months and months of work addressing community issues, and we think that we've done a very, we strongly believe that we have a plan in front of you this evening that does address the issues as they have been stated. I do think it's important to point out what was in the original appeal, since it's been so long and we've kind of gotten lost in what actually was asked for. There was discussion about this being detrimental to the health, safety, peace, and comfort of the general persons residing in our neighborhood. Lots as merged would deprive legal access, which I don't think is correct. A lot merger would allow an increase in height and increase in bulk, which I think we've clearly addressed. And there would be an economic impact on the surrounding properties, and I think that you'll see from the presentation this evening that that is, in fact, not the case. I just wanted to point out, because there'll be a lot of discussion this evening about a 1951 covenant that restricts height. I do have a handout, just so it's clear for the record, who the five parties are that are participants in this covenant. I would hand this to Kay. I think it's important to note that the five properties that are in this covenant area are the Guida's, two lots, 202808 Ocean Boulevard, 2812 Ocean Boulevard, the Artis's, 2818 Ocean Boulevard, the Campbells, 2811 Ocean, oh, okay, thank you, and the Silvers, 2821. So, there's five parties that are literally legally part of this, the discussion. The difficulty with this has been is that there's been a lot of discussion about view as it relates to this covenant, and it talks about a one-story, protecting a one-story or keeping a one-story homes on these lots, or a home. On the face of that, it seems that that would be pretty simple to build a one-story home and to get on with it. The challenge is, however, that there in this covenant, there is no definition of one-story. There is no height plane, there is no height, and even in the city's definitions, we have no definition for one-story. So, we're struggling with what is quote-unquote "an acceptable house" on this lot as we look at a one-story. We believe the house that's before you this evening with the self-imposed restrictions is truly a one-story home and is sensitive to the views to our neighbors behind. In terms of, I need something moving on in the PowerPoint. So, we come to the Guidas. They came to Newport Beach looking for a home to raise their family. They have one daughter, she is at Corona Del Mar High School, and they were desirous to move in into a wonderful community, and they've chosen Corona Del Mar. They drove the streets, as many of us do, starting down at Poppy, and we believe this is our community that we're talking about trying to be in keeping with. And as you drive down Ocean Boulevard, this is the type of community that they chose to live in, and this is the type of community that we're trying to build this house in. We come down here, round the bend, and the two houses there with, one with the little Google dot is the Guida's lots. So, this is now we're in our, in the location of Ocean Boulevard where their homes are. Around the corner is another example of the types of homes that are in this community. Then, looking back down Ocean Boulevard and coming around the bend, one of our neighbors. And again, looking down Ocean Boulevard. It's a beautiful place. It deserves the name Corona Del Mar, and we're looking forward to being able to build the home here. Again, this is the, just for the audience's orientation, these are the two lots that the Guidas purchased, and then the homes that surround us that are part of the covenant. It's important to note that 2808 and 2800 Ocean Boulevard are not part of this covenant. There's just five homes that are part of it. And then, looking at the house. There's been a lot of questions through this process. Why would the, why was there an original planning commission with the staff's, the zoning administrator's approval? Why was there a denial? Why are we even here? And I think it's important to note that this was what was shown to the Planning Commission in their first round when they did deny the application. And I think that with nothing to counter this, it's easy to understand why there may have been some concerns with these lines drawn. Our house is way below the lines that are shown in these, these original drawings that were presented by the community. There was another one presented by the, to the Planning Commission. And I think this is particularly, would be alarming. And this is actually the house that we are proposing to build, and we photosimulated the house to show you the heights and the manner in which we're proposing this new home. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rob, and he's going to go through the photo simulations that we've done in trying to be sensitive to the neighbors and the views.
Hello, Mayor Gardner, City Council members, and City of Newport Beach. My name is Robert Sinclair, Sinclair Associates Architects, 412 31st Street, Newport Beach. So, here we are. We're here to present the house and explain it and explain it clearly in regards to these photosims that we did. The owners selected us as architects because they saw in our work a sense of place and context with the surroundings. Our office has worked on many sensitive projects up and down California with 50% of our work here in Newport Beach. We have been privileged and honored to be able to work in other landmark properties as this one. We call this a landmark property because it's, it's, the corner is overlooking Lookout Point, and it's, everyone knows this property. It's very, very visible. We understand that this hearing is not about the house, it's about a lot merger, and we hope you understand what is being proposed to hopefully ease any of your concerns. We hear that some of you are concerned about the size of the lots to be merged because you feel the, you feel the bigger the lot, the bigger, more massive the house becomes on these merged lots. This massive-sized house is what some of you are saying is the detriment to your community, and this has been labeled mansionization. We understand this point. That's why we are explaining our proposed home with 3D renderings, and will present a side-by-side comparison with houses on the same block. This is our block, as we stated prior. Our proposed lot merger will create a frontage on Ocean of 80 feet, while the two adjacent homes have wider frontages of 120 and 96 feet. So, you can see the wider lots on Ocean Boulevard happen within our block. The next issue that we wish to present in regards to mass and scale, the 96-foot lot frontage is a two-story house. We want you to see the difference of this two-story house, a 96-foot frontage on Ocean, and our one-story residence with an 80-foot frontage. We hope you can see that our one-story proposed house is vastly similar in size and mass. I'm sorry. We hope you can see that our one-story proposed house is vastly smaller in size and mass than existing two-story homes on our block. We also hope you see our proposed house size, mass, and scales in context with the surrounding This, this is a street view taking along Ocean Boulevard as you round this spectacular 90-degree corner on Lookout Point. We wanted to open up the corner of the site so you could look through the corner and, and exaggerate the wide-angle view that's happening on that 90-degree corner. We hope you see that it does not stray away from the concept of existing house on the site, thus the flat roof, white trim, and detailing. This image is taken walking the other direction on Ocean toward the corner at Lookout Point. The red brick wall is that of our neighbors. You can see that we're placing a plot of grass at the corner to connect with the beautiful lawn at Lookout Point. We also wanted to scale the low-site walls to that of our neighbors. We feel the site at Lookout Point is the corner post of the community at Corona Del Mar. We want to point out how the scale of this house steps across the site with three stepping masses. Oops. Okay. Yeah. Three stepping masses, one, two, three, stepping up. Which contextually join with the scale of each of the neighboring houses. On a landmark property, many eyes are on it, and it means so much to all and the neighbors. And the neighborhood wants to be right, this to be right for their community. So, we understand your concern and interest, and thank you for coming here tonight. Oh, another thing. On this slide, I wanted to bring out the fact that the average natural grade that all heights are measured from is this 70.2 number, this line right here. And that's established, grade is established taking the corner of the front and the corner of the back of the property and averaging the four, and there's about a four-foot differential between the front and the back, and that average comes to the 70.2. Also, we wanted to point out on this slide that there's, the finish for the existing houses on each side of 71.03, and this house right here is 71.22.
How much longer will you be?
About two minutes.
Great.
This is our building footprint, 5,665 square feet. This is showing the six-foot setbacks that we revised our plan to. This is showing the six-foot setbacks that we revised our plan to. And this shows the building footprint of the two separate lots, 7,601 square feet total. Above grade, including garage, 5,665 square feet. We took three pictures from the neighbors' views, from the neighbors' second-floor views, and then we photosimmed what we would see. And you're going to be seeing two slides following each of these existing views of our reductions in size. That's the first one. And the second one. The next view angle. First one. Second one. Third view angle. First one. Second one. So these show what we just showed you there. The first one was the one in red. The second one was the one in blue. So you can see the amount of reductions we have made. In our last meeting, we also reduced the four-foot setbacks and created a six-foot setback on each side to open up the view corridor as well.
Do you have Councilwoman Daigle questions to the architect?
I do, yeah. If you can go back about five or six slides where you had the 14-foot and the 15-feet. One more, I think, two more. Right. Okay. So where's the 15-foot mark? Is that the top of the roof, the mid-roof? How do you -- what is that?
The 1505 -- oh, sorry. The 1505 is measured to the roof deck.
Okay. And then what's the top of that chimney? Or whatever, the elevator shaft?
About five feet, five to six feet.
Okay. So that's about 21 feet.
Correct. 15 -- well. Yeah, it's not marked on there, but I'm assuming it's that the top of the rail right there is 42 inches, and per code, it has to be two feet above that. So I'm guessing five and a half feet, and that's to the flue and then the spark arrestor. So I'm guessing like six, six and a half feet.
So that'd be about 22, close to 22 feet. Okay. And then your 24.59, how do you get -- where is that measured to?
24.59.
The front home.
Oh, that's measured from our established grade, which is 70.2, up to the rooftop. And these are on the survey by toll engineering documents verified. The finished floors and the ceiling heights, all certified.
Okay. And then does the grade slope in any way from those various points, or is it?
I think across our property, it's about -- there's a six-foot slope, six -- I'm sorry, six-inch slope happening from here to here. But I have to check the survey to see what's happening. As you round the corner and roll up, you pick up about four feet, you know, as going Is there any other questions?
No, that will do it. Thank you.
Okay.
Before we open to the public, did you have something you wanted to say? Any staff comments yet, or you want to hold on?
Just a couple of quick points. I think it's important to note that you're not approving a specific project. So while they've got the view simulations for a specific house, that's not what you'd be approving tonight. You're just approving a lot merger and not a specific house. So they'd be able to build whatever they want as long as it was contained within the envelope that's restricted by the covenant that they're proposing. I think the second important point is that the applicant drafted the covenant because the applicant felt the restrictions may be necessary for the city council to make the findings in order to proceed with the project. But I want to point out that that's a voluntary decision on their part, and any proposed changes that would be made to that covenant would be -- need to be suggested by the applicant.
Okay. Thank you. Cora, did you want to conclude?
I think perhaps when we can come back and we -- but we have a kind of a summary of all the numbers, but it might be better to get all the testimony and come back to the numbers.
I have told Mr. Jones that he can have a longer time because he's presenting a perspective of several people who couldn't be here tonight, and then we will have a regular public comment.
Thank you, Mayor.
10 minutes.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Gardner, and City Council members. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I mean, it seems like we're rewriting the lot merger law, and suddenly now the house and the beauty of the house have something to do with it. I appreciate them showing my house, which was the blue one that they had, the 96 frontage. But just for the record, my house is 4,700 square feet. Mr. Greed is somewhere around 11,000 or 12,000 square feet. My lot is two lots that have been merged together, which is 6,200 square feet, which is just the one size of what one of his lots are. So it's a bit of a misrepresentation with the house that I have. Plus, I have no deed restrictions that limit my highs either. I'm the current height for a two-story house in Corona Del Mar at 29 feet and 24 feet over the flat. So I just wanted to address that. The other thing Corley has said that has been working diligently with the community -- I don't know who the community is because we here are the community. We've gone out, solicited to people in the community, and nobody's for this lot merger. We collected over 300 signatures of people from Corona Del Mar. And very interesting, on Ocean Boulevard, which we keep showing as the neighborhood, per se, had over 103 people that were against the lot merger. First of all, in the area of the Block 34, which we are all neighbors and all of each other, they were against it totally. Also, the cards that were sent out by the city, which is to represent the area that's affected, is a 300-foot radius, and all the people in that area also were against the lot merger. So again, I don't know who Government Solutions have been working with. They certainly haven't been with us. They certainly haven't listened to what we've had to say. I could talk about the merger law and health and welfare. It has been detrimental to the people that are and have the deed restrictions. They're older. Two are not here tonight because of poor health. And I mean, I don't know where we have to say or what we have to do. Hopefully, somebody doesn't have to have a heart attack or die to know that it does affect the public health and safety of the people that are there. And we go further and say proposed use. We now know the proposed use. We've seen his drawings, and is it detrimental? Well, I can tell you that the appraisers that we've had out looking at the property and appraising it have come up with anywhere from a million two to a million nine for those two properties for the loss of the view we're talking about. Now, I'm going to show you a couple of slides that are actual. We've asked for this property to be staked so it can be once and for all. The man that came out and took those pictures angled his cam -- camera down, so you had a great view of the back of their garages rather than the magnificent view that the Campbells and the Silvers have. In fact, Calsum and Curry was out and looked at the drawings. We showed him the drawings that are -- excuse me, the pictures that the applicant had made and also the ones that we'd made, and then looking out at the actual view, and it was quite a difference. So they're really not quite accurate, the things we see. We could go on down, and we could talk about the surrounding area. I mean, this is an anomaly. There's one lot, okay, in between Poppy and Carnation and Ocean Boulevard and the Pacific Coast Highway and also the other street that cuts down around the front. And there's some 600, almost 600 houses in there. And this would be the second-largest lot in that area. So we're not talking about something compatible in the area. His individual lots by themselves, there's 90% of the lots that are smaller than what he has on his individual lots, let alone combined in them. So you have three lots, one that's in the 13,000 to 14,000 range, one that's in the 14,000 to 15,000 range, and one that's in the 10,000 to 12,000 range. So we're talking about anomaly, not certainly something that fits in the area. But I mean, let's go further. You, at this last meeting, he asked to be able to go back to the planning commission and to put some specifics on his property as far as what he would do, self-imposed development standards. He proposed that to the planning commission. The planning commission listened to what he had to say, and then they made recommendations which are different than what he's proposing to you tonight. They asked that the height be taken down by three feet to the 67.2 rather than the 72, which meant it took it down to the sidewalk so the dimensions would be measured from the sidewalk to the height of the property, just like the three properties that are there now, which, by the way, have the covenant that we'll talk about a little bit later. He's declined to do that in his presentation tonight. He was also asked to decrease his square footage in the FAR from 1.0 that he requested and down 2.75. And again, it's well under because the city doesn't include his basement square footage. And so I don't know why that he would not occur to that, but he didn't on that also. Also, it was put in there that the city and the people affected by these covenants would have a right to enforce them, and that's been left off also. These are all recommendations of the planning commission. Now, I mean, it was a bit disconcerting, okay, and kind of flabbergasted that they would do this, go back, ask for that, and you permit them to do that, and then come back and ignore completely what they asked for. But this is what we've seen from this from the very beginning. They've not listened to any of us. They've not listened to the people that are most affected, and they're still not. I tried to have a meeting with them when -- after the planning commission because I thought with these changes, there would maybe be a good starting point for us to start and maybe work something out. And when we were told that they weren't going to adhere to these standards, of course, that took that possibility all the way. But again, working with the neighborhood, again, I don't know who they're working with, but it certainly hasn't been from us. I'd just like to make this, I guess, show you. That's not mine. Sorry. A little technical glitch here. To answer the questions that you ask as architect, okay, the 15.6 is to the top of the established grade, the new established grade, which is three feet over the height of the sidewalk, okay? And then the 15.6, you have to add 3/6 to that. So his real height there is 19 feet. The city makes no difference between the top railing or a flat roof. It's the same, and that's the amount down. This is from a shot from the Silva's house. You can see two by-fars up there. The height, according to -- these are his survey numbers, okay? That house in the front is actually 12 foot 1 inch. Those two by-fars that are up there at that height are 9 feet 11 inches. And there you have the 22 feet over the sidewalk, okay? And that's where the planning commission asked him to start his dimensions from. That's the superimposed drawing or prints that you saw now back on the computer, and you can see it wipes out the park, it wipes out the jetty, it wipes out the across the way, the beach portion, all of that area, and is just slightly above the horizon line. And this is from the Silva's house. And we'd be happy to supply the dimensions to anybody that wants to check these because these are very accurate. I would say they're plus or minus a half inch from what is proposed is to you. And there's nothing except what you see with his proposed house.
I have a quick question on that last. Where it says there, Guida proposed height.
That height is over the height of the railing.
So that's the railing height?
That's the railing height. That's correct.
But according to the proposal, going up to the railing will be transparent material.
Yeah, but if you look at what they showed you, it's transparent material, but it has many sections up there that are stone, okay, and also raised skylights that are there that go up into that area that are certainly going to affect the view. It is not clear, transparent all the way around as I think the planning commission intended it to be. And if you can go back and look at those perspectives that they showed, I think you'll see that.
But nor does it eliminate as much view as what you might gain from that demonstration.
I don't know. I don't know if you've been around too many people that have glass enclosures, and if they're not washing it every week with the salt air, you don't get much view through it, okay? And the city makes no -- remember, the city height for height is 29 feet. If you go to a flat roof or, okay, or a deck, it's 24 feet. They don't make allowance for that three foot six as far as view is concerned, and that's your city ordinance. This is a Campbell house. It's the same thing, same view. You can see what's cut out. Even if you come down 3/6 from that and say, okay, that's the glass portion, and you'll get a little view from that. Look what's been cut out. These three houses in the front were built through the standards and the deed restrictions that were there at that time.
Are you reaching your conclusion?
I'm completed. Okay. Again, I guess it's hard for us to believe that he can go ask to go back to the planning commission and then disregard everything that they ask him to do. So we would ask that you not merge these lots.
All right. Did I hear you right, though, that you have a merged lot?
I have two lots. They never merged because you didn't have to merge them that time, but I have two lots that make up my lot. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
We're going to open it to public comment. Now, I know that most of you are here for this issue, and I want to assure you that the council listens very carefully to your comments. But I also want to assure you that after we've heard the same comment three or four times, our eyes start to glaze over a bit. So if someone has said it already, you might want to just pass up and say something fresh to convince us of your perspective. So public comment, please. Councilwoman Daigle?
Yeah, I had one additional question. In terms of the subdivision pattern of the neighborhood and the lot sizes, what is the predominant pattern here in terms of lot size? And in terms of the merged lot, what will be the size of that lot? I mean, are lots, you know, 30 by 80 here, or what do they?
If you go along Ocean Boulevard, you'll see the narrow lots. You'll see some wide lots. It's a pretty mixed bag.
Yeah, the proposed lot would be 13,693 square feet. You know, other lots within the block that it's in range from a little over 7,000 to about 4,000. There are some lots, a few along Ocean Boulevard, that get up to 10,000, 13,000, 14,000. I have three noted here. And, you know, they all vary. Some of those wider lots, 7,000 square feet, some of those bigger ones.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Public comment. Don't be shy.
I'm not shy. I'm small, but I'm not shy.
All right. Do you need some assistance with the exhibit?
Good evening, Mayor Gardner and our City Council. My name is John Cummings, and I live at 2,600 Ocean Boulevard in our city of Newport Beach. And I don't know if I should address the issue about merging lots because it's going on all over our city. It's going on on Balboa Island, where I own several properties. It's going on in Corona Del Mar. It's going down in China Cove, and I know of two projects that will be coming before the city in the next few months to merge two lots, additional lots on Balboa Island for a larger home than is provided by the rather small lots that most people are content with. We keep hearing about the special circumstances of Block 34 from the people opposing Mr. and Mrs. Guida's application. The fact of the matter is the Guidas did not subdivide this Block 34 back in the '50s, and they are being somewhat persecuted by their neighbors because they happened to own these two beautiful lots in this subdivision that was the result of efforts back in the '50s by the owners of this Block 34 in the '50s. The Guidas purchased -- excuse me, purchased these two adjoining lots for the purpose of building their dream home here in Corona Del Mar. The Guidas have come to Corona Del Mar and have designed and redesigned their building, plan only to be continually, and I'm going to say harassed and entreated. I'm almost embarrassed. I'm almost embarrassed the way this thing is going, because then we can talk about the lot merger concept. Their building plans only be continually somewhat harassed and treated rather rudely by the neighbors on Block Thirty-four. Mr. and Mrs. Guida have agreed to construct a one-story structure on their lots. They have also agreed generously to landscape the roof of this home, which I think is rather exceptional, in an effort to appease the neighbors on the alley at the rear of these lots. To date, these neighbors continue to complain and complain. The Guidas have also agreed to doubling the sized yard setbacks to six feet on each side, which negates several of the claims brought up in previous meetings before, and facts, or purported facts brought to the city. If we, if we take a minute and reflect back on significant homes that were built in our neighborhood over the years, we can't possibly forget the beautiful and highly unique China House that existed in China Cove before it was ultimately torn down to accommodate two long, skinny houses similar to that which we see today because of the constrictions of our lot sizes in Corona Del Mar. Several of my neighbors and I are thrilled with the concept and prospect of a home that is planned by the Guidas, no matter what anybody says about the community. The Guidas have agreed to a one-story structure as called for in the agreement with the other owners within this block, and they have shown nothing but good faith and a continued attempt to placate this group of owners that simply refuse to acknowledge the efforts that they've taken so far. I don't know if this is, if I should be maybe spending more time on the concept of lot mergers, but what I did in a little free time I had, I took a camera, went out and took several photographs of homes that have recently gone through a lot merger. One of them is on Harbor Island, a property owner that we all know very, very well. One down below us on Cove is another, one of our well-known citizens here, tore down two houses, and he was granted a merger to build his large new home in China Cove. And then these other houses, there's one on Bayside Drive, and I can, I'll leave this for the City Council to take a look at, because the merger, the concept of lot mergers is going on, has been going on in our community for years, and it's continued to go on throughout our city, Balboa Island, the peninsula, and in Corona Del Mar. Thank you very much for your time.
Hi, my name is Jeff Dufine. I'm sure you've gotten lots of emails from me. I'd like to address a few things. I may need an extra two minutes, if that's possible.
No, we have a lot of people that want to speak. Mr. Dufine?
Okay, well, I'd like to address the fact that the covenant refers to a one-story house. And since it was brought up, the one-story house that it refers to was built at the time by the person, Mr. Welland, that said, "We have no idea what the originator of the covenant meant by a one-story house." Well, the two houses that were built were built by the originator of the covenant. He built them in order to grant views to the rear property in quid pro quo for access to the front properties, that the rear properties would grant access through, permission to use the road, and the front properties would build houses that was one-story in nineteen fifty-one. It's not vague, it's definitely clear, and courts have ruled as such. Now, my other thing is, if this merger goes through, I have told you people in emails, you people, I'm sorry, you council members, that the Campbells and the Silvers will move to close his permission to use the road. And you came back with that there might be, that they could possibly get a curb cut on Ocean Boulevard. Well, I believe that a curb cut on Ocean Boulevard would be bordering on negligent at this point. It is sixty feet away from a blind corner, opposite lookout point at the possibly most pedestrian-crossed street with no crosswalk, because there are red, you know, no parking things. People cross, cars come, bicycle riders come. And just a week ago, a car was driven into a house on Iris in an accident by a motorist that crashed into a car and it wound up in a house. Here, at this point, granting a curb cut of this dangerous type without some sort of a study or traffic study or safety study puts the city at great risk. And it leaves the community and the tourists at great risk of, it's an accident waiting to happen, that a car comes around the turn too fast, and a car comes out of the driveway, and a car winds up killing people on lookout point, because that's what, that's where the car will wind up. And I don't believe that the city can grant that. Lastly, I would just like to say that, that he has ignored all, he's not worked with these people, and he's ignored the Planning Commission, which recommended that he reduce his house. He has a six thousand or maybe five thousand square foot excavation that he wants to do at this point, opposite lookout point, that he doesn't include because of the laws in his square footage. That's a five thousand square foot excavation that will go on at this point, which no study has been done whether this is hazardous to the hill that it's going to be on. Secondly, no construction trucks will be allowed down that private road. It is only for ingress and egress of private cars. All cranes, construction trucks, dump trucks will be entering right at that curb cut on Ocean Boulevard in the middle of the biggest tourist season in Corona Del Mar, putting tourists and the like at risk. I think the city would have to put a stop sign up, they would have to put a crosswalk up, and this is all for the sake of a lot merger that frankly does not fit. It will be detrimental to the community, it will be detrimental to tourism. I've had some people tell these families, "I don't feel safe with my kids sitting across there anymore if that corner is going to be jeopardized by a curb cut on it." And so that's, my red light's on. Thank you so much. I've enjoyed speaking to you.
Thank you very much.
Harlan Rushing, two seventeen Heliotrope. I just wanted to clear up what the fellow said before him about alley. That is not an alley. It is Ocean Lane. It is a dedicated street. When you cross Heliotrope, it becomes an alley. But there, it has two houses facing it, the Campbells and the Silva's house. Your mail goes there, everything. It is a street. Can't be called an alley. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. My name is Stephen Miles, Miles Law Group, three-one five-one, Airway Avenue, Costa Mesa. I'm here on behalf of several property owners and environmental interests, including several of the property owners that are party to the restrictive covenant from nineteen fifty-one. And I would like to start my commentary by saying that I'm utterly confused by the equivocation that's going on this evening between the characterization of this as a lot merger. I empathize with your city attorney trying to reiterate that this is just a lot merger, when in fact it really isn't. I've submitted a commentary, I believe you received it. I do have additional copies if you have not. One of our points of contention in that written material is that this lot merger is a disguise of a lot merger, where it's, the truth of the matter is reflected in the administrative record, is that this is a lot merger and a proposal for demolition and a proposal for construction. We spent the entire evening, or the representative for the applicant spent their entire fifteen minutes plus discussing nothing about a lot merger. So the reality here is that you have environmental analysis consisting of a categorical exemption for a lot merger, and that's class five. Class five doesn't even apply to a lot merger in this case. Class five is, does not allow a change in density. I'd like to read a poignant passage from Commissioner Torch addressing this concept of a lot merger. It states, "On a general note, lot mergers are not without impacts. When two lots are merged, side yard setbacks along the common emerged lot line disappear. After a merge, the elimination of these side yard setbacks renders a combined lot with more billable area than the sum of the billable area of the lots before they were merged." This allows greater building mass and density. That's a change in a density, that's an increase in a density, than if the lots were not merged. Further, further, open space is lost in the area of these disappearing side yard setbacks. While this impact in many cases can be negligible, in this case it is significant. What that point means is that class five, if it were to apply and it doesn't, there still is a concept under SEQA jurisprudence called the exception to the exemption. That SEQA guideline, section one-five-three-hundred-point-two, and it states that if you have unusual circumstances, you cannot use your categorical exemption. That makes sense. Here we have two lots that have two historically significant dwellings that have been there without interruption for sixty, over sixty years. This is not your run-of-the-mill lot merger, nor does class five even reference a lot merger in the specific minor alterations of land use that are codified in that guideline. What you have today now is the city attorney's office attempting to bolster findings in the staff report by adding class one and class three to the categorical exemptions in the proposed resolution that would approve the lot merger. Class one is demolition. Class three is new construction. What are we talking about here? Your city attorney just said that we're talking about a lot merger. What are we talking about? Is it a lot merger? Or is it a lot merger in construction and demolition? I think we have equivocation here that clearly states that this council should take a step back. You need to verify the heights of this proposed residence. Nothing has been verified here. We're seeing diagrams. None of this is confirmed. You're looking at it, we're looking at it from different angles and perspectives. Point is that you've processed this thing as a lot merger when it never was. You did not analyze the whole of the project. This is a seminal point in SEQA practice. You must look at the whole of the project. And in this case, it would make sense to have an application that is functional, that would include a lot merger. You don't need a lot merger in a vacuum. We're looking at these diagrams. It's clear that we have demolition of two Eichler-style structures and a proposed new residence. Why not process that application appropriately along with the lot merger? I think that would make a lot of sense, it'd clarify a lot of things. I think that's the source of the confusion that we're, that we're having today when we're trying to say, one side of our mouth, that we're dealing with a lot merger, when in reality, we're dealing with the demolition of a historical resource and the proposal for a new construction of a private residence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you wish to hold your comments or respond now?
I think it'd probably be appropriate to go ahead and respond at this point to the comments made by Mr. Miles. The first argument he's making is in essence that the city's piecemealing this project, that we're approving the lot merger now, and then they're going to approve the building of the house later and the demolition later. All of those activities would still be categorically exempt, so the city's not piecemealing them. We added to the proposed resolution for approval if that's where the City Council decides to go in this matter, basically the other exemptions that would apply to the subsequent steps that would be taken, assuming that the lots were merged. In regards to the class five exemption, it is appropriate because density in this case is decreasing. You're going from two units to one unit. I'm not sure where Mr. Miles is going as far as saying density is increasing, but obviously, you know, if you had two houses before and you're going to have one afterwards, density would be decreasing. There's no additional lots being created, and the land use is remaining as a residential use. And Mr. Miles mentioned that there were some potential exceptions to the categorical exemptions. In general, when you're looking at the exceptions to the categorical exemptions, you have to look on the impact of the community at large. You don't look at height, view, obstructions, and privacy issues associated with one particular neighboring property. You kind of look at all the issues at large and basically see whether or not there's going to be significant effect on the environment due to unusual circumstances related to the entire community. The use that's being proposed is consistent with the other uses that are there as far as a residential use. We checked the historical records. There's no listing of it as being a historical property in any of the registries, and I think Ms. Brand can kind of supplement on that point. But he sort of speculates that there may be some historical value associated with these two properties, and our thorough research of our records do not reveal any of that, and there's no evidence to that effect. The burden's on the objecting party to make the burden of proof on those issues, and I don't believe he's made that.
All right. More public comment?
Mayor Gardner and honored members of the City Council. My name is Marsden Blanch. My wife and I reside at two nineteen Heliotrope Avenue. We have lived there for nearly fifteen years and invested a large portion of our lives and our personal savings in purchasing and improving our home there. Thank you very much, by the way, for your attempts at beautifying the streets in Corona Del Mar with the planting of very beautiful trees. In the beginning, as we looked for a place in Southern California to reside, we had an opportunity to buy anywhere in Southern California. We chose Corona Del Mar for its beauty, its incomparable views, and its wonderful, friendly village appeal. In fact, we chose to live in what was represented to us as the village. We adored the fact that most residents around us were great neighbors, very easy to know and love. Most were not wealthy, and many had saved for a lifetime to spend their retirement years in the village. When we bought our home, we were overwhelmed by the view from the upper decks, and we were reassured that this view would never be taken from us due to restrictive covenants concerning the height of some of the homes between us and the beautiful park and ocean. Now, Mr. Guida has developed a scheme to merge these lots and build a mega house and deprive so very many of not only the view we love, but also the village atmosphere. In one of the very earliest meetings we had concerning this matter, the city planner in approving the lot merger reminded us all that the duty of city government was to protect the interest of the public at the expense of the individual. I couldn't agree more. He then, to my horror, made the unconscionable statement that if this merger would simply affect the public rather than just the citizens of Corona Del Mar, he would have to deny the merger. I would simply ask him then and the City Council now, who is the public if not those that live here and allow themselves to be governed by their elected officials? My appeal to you today is to protect the interest of the public, the citizens of Corona Del Mar. I doubt seriously that beyond the small circle of Mr. Guida, his architects, builders, lawyers, and lobbyists, very few residents would approve of the lot merger. I plead with you to protect the views established and maintained for decades, protect this sense of village, and protect the interests that so many common citizens of this community have built over a lifetime. Please consider the precedent that will be established and the long-term deleterious effect this merger will have on the peaceful village of Corona Del Mar. I beg you to deny the request to merge the lots and trample the vision of the early planners of this quaint and delightful village. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Gardner and members of the Council, my name is Jim Mosher. One thing that struck me about this new resolution that showed up ten minutes before the beginning of tonight's meeting at seven o'clock, and the new covenant of restrictions that showed up about one minute before the meeting started, was that the Planning Commission had recommended that these covenants, to protect the neighbors, were to require, if they were to be changed, that not only the city, but also the neighbors would have to sign off on that. I thought that was a reasonable request. I thought that was a reasonable request that the planning commission made of the applicant, and I find that nowhere in this thing that you gave the applicant two weeks to prepare magically didn't show up until a minute before the meeting. And this may sound repetitive, but it's not. I wanted to go back to this question about the SEQA exemption, because, as you know, I have an interest in seeing that the city follows the rules. And I actually questioned the planning commission, or the applicant, or the planning division, I guess, when this application was before the planning commission, about whether the SEQA exemption that is claimed is the correct one or not. And in this new resolution that showed up, actually, there was a version that showed up about two hours before the meeting, and had been changed in that, and had been changed in the one that showed up ten minutes before the meeting. If I direct you to page three of the new resolution that you're being asked to approve tonight, section about SEQA quality determination, originally it said it was exempt because of Class 5 exemption, which allegedly covered the merger aspect of this. City staff in the red line added two new exemptions, Class 1 and Class 3, that cover the subsequent, apparently, they cover the subsequent construction that would happen later, has nothing to do with the merger. Going back to the Class 5 one, it does cover the merger. The staff has added a lot, the question was, and unfortunately, I think the city attorney confused the issue here, he said, "Is this an increase, decrease in density?" What the exemption is, is spelled out here in Item 2 in this section. To qualify for the exemption, the change in the lot subdivision has to involve no change in density. And clearly, this is a change in density. The city has added a lot of words that, to my understanding, don't address that at all, and added a new question that I was not aware of. At the bottom of Page 3 and the beginning of Page 4 of the resolution, it says, "In this coastal zone that the density," density means the number of dwelling units per acre, "has to be between 6.0 and 9.9 dwelling units per acre." I did the math on that. The lots that are there currently are 6.1 and 6.7 dwelling units per acre. They're within that acceptable range. When you go to this big lot with still a single house on it, the density is certainly not going to be unchanged. It's going to be decreased by a factor of two. The new density that will result is, according to the figures that are in the staff report, 3.2 dwelling units per acre. That means this is a big lot with a single house. It's not in the range that the staff report tells us is what the coastal zoning requires. I haven't researched that. I don't know if there's some error either in the staff report or the finding. The new density of 3.2 is clearly not in that range. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Richard Artis, and I live at 2818 Ocean Boulevard. I've been there for forty-four years. And during that period of time, we've recognized the height limits, and nobody has tried to supersede it until this time. And if you look at the picture, they showed the houses from the front. Mine's the one you could see to our right. And mine was built up to the height limitations, and it's completely dwarfed by the height on the Guida house. So I think they are superseding the intent of the restrictions as the lots were divided. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Yes. Uh-huh. So your home is the--
Excuse me, sir.
Your home is 2818 Ocean?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Gardner. My name is Lyssinda Campbell. I'm just going to read something. Agenda item number 11 violates the Ralph M. Brown Act. Item 11 contains no reference to anything other than denial or approval of a lot merger. The agenda item does not reference demolition or construction is now referenced in the last-minute resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Purcell, Corona del Mar. I live on Ocean Boulevard as well. I want to talk about process a little bit. The documents that you have before you were presented at the last minute. Certainly, most of the public didn't have an opportunity to review those documents. They weren't available online, and the consultant from Government Solutions, Inc., wasn't even sure that you, the council members who are here to vote on this this evening, had even seen those at this point. So I think that's inappropriate, also considering the fact that I didn't get to comment at the last hearing on this in favor of a longer extension before having this hearing denied, even though public comments were not closed at that time. And a representative from Government Solutions was adamant about having the hearing tonight, not allowing more time, and then now to only get their documents in at the absolute last minute with no opportunity for people to review those. I understand the predicament the city's in, the leadership is in right now. We've got someone who owns two lots on Ocean Boulevard. What are they going to do with them? He owns them. He's kind of stuck with them. You want to make a deal. You want to make it work. But the fact of the matter is, he didn't do his homework in advance, the owner, and he didn't purchase the property properly. The lot in Chinaco, the merged lot in Chinaco, was referenced this evening. Well, that merger went through before the lot was actually purchased. My understanding is they had an agreement, "If this gets merged, we will then buy the property and build on it." That didn't happen there. Rolled the dice. He was probably told, "We'll get it through the zoning administrator. We'll get it stamped. We'll get it through. Everything's a good deal." And, you know, it'll get done. And unfortunately, in this case, it didn't. So he took his chances. Thanks.
Thank you. Next.
Council members, your honor. My name is Mark Todd, and I actually represented Mr. Guida on the purchase, and we had disclosed to him the deed restriction. And I just have ten quick points I just want to bring up in the conversation tonight. First of all, the deed restriction is a civil issue, not a civic issue. It should be handled privately, not in a civic arena. The city has never historically protected views on other building properties. The covenant makes no exclusion of the lot merger. It talks about a one-story property, but doesn't say you cannot re-merge the properties. The self-imposed restrictions Mr. Guida has provided provide greater side views than the current structures that are currently there. So in essence, the people will be gaining more side view alongside of the house than what's currently there. Some of the neighbors have mentioned that they have collected signatures. Well, I too have gone door-to-door, as are any good real-to-wood, and collected signatures. Then many people said that the items that they signed were against a lot merger for a two-story house. We don't have a two-story house. We have a one-story house. Mr. Cummings is a resident of Ocean Boulevard. He lives at 2600, and he also has that survey, which was given to him. Three lots of greater size are within close proximity to Mr. Guida's property. One home is on two lots that may be coming up as a merger also at 2800 Ocean Boulevard, which is the old 1903 property that's currently under some financial constraints. Easements to the property currently, as dated, are also filled with public work easements and city easements that run down that alley. The appraiser quotes mentioned earlier are speculative. An appraiser, you know, can't give a true value to what a new structure or the current view of that roof may or may not impact the current property owners. And an Eichler-style house is not an Eichler house. Neither is a fake Louis Vuitton bag, a real Louis Vuitton bag. So, anyway, just my ten points I quickly wanted to touch upon, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Bob Clark. I'm a longtime resident of Newport Beach, and I have an academic question that if I own these two parcels, what would the actual heights that I could build two new structures on? Can somebody give me that answer while I make my presentation?
Stop. Staff, would you like to answer that?
That would be great. Thank you.
Right. The zoning code height limit standards for these properties are 24 feet to a flat roof, 29 feet to a pitched roof, and that's measured from the established grade. In this lot, we determine that to be 70.2.
So it would appear that we have two issues here. We have a private covenant, and we also have the city's allowable building standards. I hear words such as detrimental health and welfare, historical significant structures, Eichler-type houses, which quite honestly is a real reach. They, I'm the ultimate optimist in trying to maintain historical houses, and I can't see any redeemable quality in either of those houses, frankly. That location's one of the most important and highly visible corners in our city. And it would seem inappropriate that whatever structure is built there needs to be something special. And from what I've seen this evening, based on the slides, the structure that they're proposing is a special structure. I take a little different tact on the density, because when you, I think there's a positive to lot mergers, because it reduces density. It reduces traffic. It reduces parking. And it might even increase safety as a response to this gentleman's concern about people walking across the street. So how can a community not want reduced density? That's what befuddles me. Seems like it's a win-win situation for the city. It's a win-win situation for the community. And it's an all-around win-win situation. So I find it very intriguing that they're so opposed to this reduction. And yet, one gentleman has a house that's on two lots, and that seems to me to be a real double standard. And from what I can gather, he's one of the most adamant opposers of this project. And yet, he has a huge two-story house, it's on two lots, and to me, that's a definite double standard. So thank you very kindly for your attention, and I think that's going to be it.
Thank you. Next.
Mayor Gardner and council members, my name is John Silva. I'm one of the owners of one of the houses most directly going to be--
Affected.
Affected by this merger. And I'm very much adamantly opposed to the merger. And you haven't addressed the curb cut. And if they don't have access to the lots, how are they going to have access to their house, magnificent house? Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Mayor Gardner, council members, excuse me, and staff. My name is Alberta Silva. I live at 2821 Ocean Lane. My husband and I have lived in Newport Beach for forty-five years. We've raised six children and grandchildren in Newport Beach. We have been in businesses servicing this community. My husband is a pharmacist until his retirement, and I was in banking for many years. And I still am working in the hospitality business part-time. It's sort of my fun retirement job. I get to share the people that come here at our wonderful hotel, all about this fabulous city. My husband designed our house. He built our house all by himself. Weekends, summers, while he had his full-time job. So it's more than a house. It's a home beyond a house. As he worked doing this, he knew the effort was worth it, to have this beautiful view and location, knowing the legal restrictions were secure for our future. If the merger is to be approved, it affects the welfare of everyone surrounding this property. It reduces the value of our house a huge amount and our neighbors. We have supported this community all these years, and I find it really interesting, and I have a hard time understanding, that someone who wants to build here because he likes the village of Corona del Mar, and then wants to change his property to be a huge and out-of-place house that does not fit. Please do not allow this merger. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
My name is Peter Campbell, and I'll try to speak on behalf of our family that's been at 2811 Ocean Lane. My mother, Joan, are not able to be here tonight. My mother fell several weeks ago and fractured a vertebrae in her back, so she's mobile, but not actively traveling. I'll try to keep it simple. Both my parents don't understand how the city can interfere with a contractual relationship that's been in place for fifty-some years. It's usually recorded deeds with the county of Orange, and so they're not quite sure how these can be overturned. The restrictions are quite clear. And also, the planning commission had set some guidelines for Mr. Guida to follow, and he clearly didn't do that. And it would seem like a bad precedent to allow a newcomer to come in and break the rules that have been followed for the last forty or fifty years, and also not accept the guidelines that were given to him. And lastly, from my mother's viewpoint, her, at eighty-five, she says this all the time, that life's a miracle, and everybody in this room is a miracle, and she, in her simple way, thinks this is a bit of a waste of our time. Time, to her, is precious. That's the only thing that she feels like she has. And she asks herself, "What is enough here? Why does a family of three or four people need a house, including the basement, that's 12,000 square feet, especially when it's hurting the surrounding people? It just doesn't seem to be worth it. All of us tonight could be home enjoying family and friends, which is what life is for, yet there is this struggle." And I don't see happiness in Mr. Guida's face and his posture. I can't see that this is bringing any kind of good to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment? Seeing none, I'll let the applicant respond briefly.
I would just, again, like to say that we truly have listened, and it's very difficult. The reason that we started talking about a house was because we were, the people were talking about standards that were the city's standards, 1.5 floor area level, and then using the 24 to 29 feet heights, which was those first drawings, and saying, "This is a mansion you're building." Even in the appeal that is on file that we're here to talk about tonight, it talks about height. When I've met with the neighbors, what they've said to me is, "Cora, the only thing that is of interest to us is view, view, view." So it's very difficult to address those issues without establishing some framework upon which, how to address those issues. And that's what we've sincerely attempted to do. We did bring forward our suggested restrictions per the staff's request, or we wanted to impose ourselves of those, and we put those in a format and given those to the city staff. I think Mr. Guida would like to add a few more additions to that. I would ask, with all due respect, that if there is, we have a proposal that's in the recommendation for approval. There's a proposal that's embedded in the planning commission recommendations in another resolution. If the council so wishes to discuss or weave those together in some way, I would hope that we would have the opportunity to respond to that. But I think we do have one more suggestion that Mr. Guida would like to offer. Thank you.
You want to make that now?
Yes. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. The comment was made about the .75, and the process that was going on, as everyone is well aware of from the council and the staff, is that we were trying to work on the restricted covenant and the verbiage for that. That being said, and listening to the comments here this evening, I'm willing to go ahead and volunteer the fact that we will go with a .75 FAL, which I think would hopefully satisfy the question regarding the amount of buildable square footage on the merged lot as opposed to the buildable square footage on two individual lots. Because I believe...I don't know for sure, but my belief at this point, without being able to study it real closely, is that by going to a .75, that square footage would hopefully come pretty close to the two individual lots, and would hopefully satisfy part of the requirement, if you will, to ensure that the square footage is not getting too large. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before you leave the podium here, so just to be clear, the size of the house, as you currently propose it, is first floor 5600 square feet?
(inaudible)
And to go to a .75, what does that do to your...do you have a feeling for what that does to your first-floor square footage?
I would believe we can still fit the current house as designed within that .75 FAL. And the way I'm looking at it is the question is, what is the potential that is the concern to the city on the size of the house getting too large? So with the recommendation that came from the commissioners on the approval back up to you as the council was a .75, and it was indicated, I guess, in public comment that I was unwilling to do that, based on hearing the comment, and with as quickly as everything has been moving in the past 24 to 48 hours, it's something that I think we can address and hit that .75, if in fact that is something that the council would need to determine the merger.
All right.
If that answers your question appropriately, Mr. Ann. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything else?
I'm not sure where you stand with regards to the chimneys, if that's a concern and that's something that the council wishes to address. I would be open for a discussion on that as well.
All right. Thank you. Staff, do you have any comments before we start to chat among ourselves?
If you have any specific questions, we'll be happy to address them.
I think we have lots of questions. Mayor Protam Curry.
The difference between the Planning Commission recommendation and the applicant's proposed alternative seems to be measurement from the established grade of 67.2 or the establishment of 70.2. There's three feet in play there. Can you explain the differences between those and the rationale for the Planning Commission's
The original grade...
Or the practical impact of that, I guess, is what I'm asking.
The practical impact is really related to where you are going to measure grade because the 67.2 does not necessarily have to exist on the graded property, if that makes sense. It's just how you're going to take that point and measure the overall height of the building. So the 70.2 represents, per zoning code, how grade would be determined on the property. And as their architect was explaining, it's by using the averages of the four corners of the lot, and that's how you come...that's how the zoning code determines a grade point of 70.2 to measure the overall building height. It doesn't require that the property be graded to 70.2, but that is where the height will be measured from, if that makes sense.
So then you would just drop that?
If you wish.
I mean, if that...what the...under the Planning Commission's scenario, you would simply take your measurement from the lower spot?
Of 67.2, and I'll double-check with Greg Ramirez, but that was to reflect the sidewalk grade, the 67.2?
67.2 is basically the grade of the top curve in the sidewalk.
Okay. Thank you.
So may I just follow up on that particular point, and then I'd be happy to give the floor back. So is it feasible, then, to build a house with the 15-foot, the stepped 15-feet height of the roofline? Is it feasible to build it from the 67-foot, the staff, grade? I mean, is there any reason why that would not be feasible?
Councilman Hill? Mr. Architect?
Well, I think it would be feasible, right. It would...that's where we would measure the height from, if they chose to put the finished floor there.
But I wouldn't drop the grade below the line of the curb or anything like that that would be clearly silly.
It would be close...it would be about even with the line of the curb. Of course, they'd have to address some drainage issues and things of that nature, but that could be done in the side yards where higher grades and drains and things like that. It'd be more of a challenge, but I believe that it could be done. And maybe some of the builders might be able to expand on that.
Well, before we're done, I'd like to hear the applicant comment on that issue.
Then one additional question. Mr. Mozer raises an interesting conundrum here about whether or not, because we're decreasing the density, or arguably decreasing the density, that therefore it doesn't meet the definition requirements. Would you like to comment on that, Mr. City Attorney?
The classified exception is designed for, basically, looking at the increase of density. I do appreciate his comments. He did make one other comment as well regarding the coastal land use plan, and talking about the range that's set as far as 6.0 to 9.9. And those are basically setting the maximums. Under the land use plan, which the coastal...I'm sorry, the land use element, which the coastal land use plan refers to in a bit of conflicts, it does not contain a minimum developed area, so there's no conflict there either. I believe that was the other point you raised.
All right. Oh, Councilman Deagle.
You know, with these...with a lot merger, you have to be able to make findings. And there's a couple of findings that I have questions about, and the ability to make that finding. The first one is finding A...it's page four of eight within the resolution. And it talks about that the merger will not be detrimental to the peace and comfort of the area. It seems that we've heard testimony to the contrary. It's subjective, as it would be. So how do you make findings...how do you make that finding when people have clearly testified that it is detrimental to their peace and comfort?
The real question is, is it detrimental to the peace and comfort of the community at large? You don't look at one particular property owner to make that determination.
Okay. And then on finding C2, where it does discuss that density range from the general plan, and this is not something that is subjective, it's calculable, it's quantitative, and it says that the subdivision range is from 6, so that's the low point, to 9.9. And so if you look at 9.9 dwelling units per acre, so you look at an acre, I think it's about 43,000 square feet, and if you look at 10 units to the acre, that's about 4,300 square-foot lots. Is that correct?
Yes. Councilmember Deagle, when the general plan, and also when you look at the land use plan, they're looking at maximum densities. And typically, in practice, you say that that is up to the maximum density allowed on a property. And then the zoning code, in turn, is the implementing document to ensure that development proceeds in accordance with the general plan. So the zoning code establishes a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, which brings it in just under nine units per acre. So that ensures that we have consistency between zoning code, the general plan, and the coastal land use plan. The zoning code does not include a maximum lot size, only a minimum lot size.
Right. But the general plan, though, is a document that we amended. We took a great deal of thought and time and process to do that. And the general plan stands on its own in saying that the density range in this neighborhood, in this area, is six units to 10 units. And when people talk about a 13,000-square-foot lot or 20,000-square-foot lot, that may be appropriate on Harbor Island, but when you look at the photograph, and when I asked you about it, you said that lot sizes in this area are 3,000 square feet, 4,000 square foot, and 13,000 square feet is an anomaly. So what I'm worried about is that we have a subdivision pattern, an established pattern in this area, and what we're doing is not consistent with that. We're talking about, if you look at a 13,000-square-foot lot, then you're down to three dwelling units per acre. And the general plan's saying you should really be ideally between 6 and 10. So my concern is that we're altering the density pattern, the subdivision pattern of the neighborhood, in a way that the general plan speaks otherwise.
Councilman Solich.
Yeah, I'll just respond to a couple of things here. On the density issue, I think the general plan really applies to a much broader area. You don't look at it on a lot-by-lot basis. So that density is something that's applied over the entire Old Town area of Corona del Mar, and you have big lots, you have average lots, you've got small lots. So I think that density is meant to be applied over a much larger area, not a lot, not a block, but a much larger area. And the operative criteria for review is the zoning code, and the fact that you have one lot and a single-family home on it, and that's how we deal with the density. I do have a question for the City Attorney, though. Mr. Miles brought up the...or I guess someone who was with him brought up the idea that we're violating the Brown Act because you added the categorical exemptions for construction and demolition in the resolution. Would you like to respond to that?
Give me just a moment. I want to take another look at the agenda. I'll respond to it in just a moment.
Councilman Hill?
Well, I didn't think I'd ever agree with Dan so readily. I think Dan said it well. This is a mess. And, I mean, this is a lot merger. It went to the Planning Commission as a lot merger, and they said no, obviously, I guess, because they couldn't make the findings. The applicant appealed that and then asked to go back to the Planning Commission. And I would think that, as Dan kind of alluded, the Planning Commission must have had an attitude as, well, you know, it's requested as a lot merger, but it's really about size and it's really about view. And those are things that we're not supposed to really be involved in, per se. It's about a deed restriction that's been in place for 40-some years, and so maybe we could just come up with something that could cause everybody to kind of agree and get along and move forward. And so they sent it back to us and said, "Well, we would agree based upon these conditions." And the conditions that they placed on it really were conditions that impacted, in a positive sense, the view and the size and these types of things. And the applicant, for some reasons, decided they didn't like those conditions, and so now they're back to us again to try to say this is really just a lot merger. And I guess academically, I can agree with that, but in reality, I can't agree with that. And I think that there is a solution that protects the view, and I think that the home as designed can be built, the ADA desire for the house can be achieved, and it can be done much closer to that 67.2 elevation to start with versus raising the pad three feet to build the home. And I think the solution is...the technical solution is in the grading, as the easement is brought into the property from the back. And the elevation for the garage in the house is achieved, not just by coming down the easement, but by the whole yard of half of the lot, if it were combined, to get down to the garage level, and a retaining wall for that drive that would then allow you to come out of the garage and be at the level of the house. So I think there are solutions to it. And I had hopes in talking to the people as they went through this process that they were, I thought at one point in time, a foot away from reaching agreement, but then couldn't get to that last foot. And so if the house...if this is purely a lot merger and there are no other requirements on it, then I agree with the initial decision of the Planning Commission. I don't see the findings. I can't support it. If it is a house that could be built, that could achieve the other aspects, then I could support it.
All right. Thank you. All right.
Can I be clear on what you're saying? So what you're saying is, if the house were built in accordance with the last set of recommendations of the Planning Commission, you could be supportive of going forward?
Yes.
Okay.
We have here one of these difficult things. I mean, you look at the two presentations, we have dueling photos. I mean, one shows no view, one shows, you know, complete view practically. We have signatures. I'm sorry, but both sides. I mean, depending on how I ask the question, I can get you to sign something. So I don't mean to disregard that, but I don't put a lot of credence in it. One thing that impressed me about a possible merger was, I do like the idea of the bigger side easements, the side setbacks. I mean, a six-foot on each side is a better view. I think that's nice. That gives some space. I have a question, and I'm not quite sure which one of staff will answer it, but we've discussed it before. I really don't want access on Ocean Boulevard, but it's my understanding that if they were prevented from accessing through the easement, that we would basically have to grant them access off of Ocean Boulevard. Is that correct?
Mayor Gardner, that is correct. This has been an issue that the Public Works Department has looked at, I think, when this application first went to the zoning administrator. And it was determined at that time that there was sufficient distance from the corner, and that it could be provided, that a driveway could be provided off of Ocean Boulevard that would not result in a traffic safety hazard. If you need any additional information, I believe that Steve Baden can expand on that.
You want to add anything? Steve? I'm sorry to make you do that.
That's okay. Our traffic engineer, Tony Bryant, has looked at this pretty thoroughly. Those...the area...it's not...it's kind of typical. We have driveways all over that area. There's actually one near Poppy that is very, very similar to the situation, and we don't have any accident history, any problems. So it's certainly doable. I should point out, though, that easement in the back, the city does hold utilities easement there, and that would certainly need to still remain intact for sewer. But as far as putting a driveway on Ocean, it's certainly possible, and I think it could be done safely.
Okay. I would also echo that. I agree with Dan, that I am disappointed in the timeliness that we got this material. You didn't want to go longer. We said, "Okay." We thought it would be good to get this thing settled, and then we get it minutes before. And I find that very unprofessional, frankly, that we shouldn't have more time to review this. But I will bring it back. Would someone like to make a motion? Councilman Hill?
Just briefly, I'd like to address Councilmember Solich's question regarding the Brown Act. I did review the agenda. I believe it adequately describes the actions that are being taken here tonight, and so I do not believe there's been any...there are any issues with the Brown Act.
You know, that's fine if you want to take a motion. I still want to hear from the applicants.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, well, regarding this issue of building from 67.2, does the applicant have an opinion about that?
Well, there's a four-foot differential between the front of the house and the back of the house, right? And the easement in the motor court for the garage and the neighbor's garage can't be lowered. You can't grade that easement down, right? It has to stay where it's at. So that's at 73 and 1/2, and the front of the property at the street would be at 67 curb line. That would be a five-foot difference in the first floor for someone who wants an ADA house. I mean, that's a stretch to try to get that to all work out. So it's...and you can see by the neighbors, they had the same issue because So it's, and you can see by the neighbors, they had the same issue because their finished floor is up, as I presented in the slide. The finished floor, we're only nine inches difference from each of the neighbor's finished floor. They have full first floor garage entries and, and level pads. So it seems like we're in the character of the neighborhood, we're in the character of the, of the, of the neighbor's property and how they handle the slope to create a one-story access from garage to house.
But is it feasible to execute the 67.2?
Well, you'd have, you'd have half of, you'd have five, five feet of stairs between the garage and the first floor. You know what I mean? It'd be, it's like a split level, you're creating the garage at a split level. So to get a handicap access on that, it's going to be, I don't know. I mean, I don't know, I really don't know.
Isn't it, I mean, I'm not saying I agree or disagree, but isn't it just a matter of like a lift or something? I mean, that's what people put in their house. I mean, people have stairways and they put those little things, that, niculators that go up the stairway, so, I mean, it doesn't seem like it's that big of a deal. If you want an ADA house, I mean, you know, it's great, I appreciate, I, you know, I moved into a single-story house, I'm only 52, and I'm figuring I'm going to need to not have, or have one level as well, but, I mean, at some point here, you know, we can't just, we can't change all the rules just to design one particular house. I mean, we're changing some rules as it is, or, or modifying rules, but it seems like you gotta, gotta work with what you have.
Councilman Hill, are you through? Councilman Hill?
You made the comment that you can't grade down at the back, and yet the, the existing pad at the back is even above than other neighbors', above 2818's garage level, so why can't you grade that down?
We asked the civil engineer to create a garage apron as low as he possibly could without creating grading on the easement, and he came up with that number, toll engineering.
Well, I mean, it seems to me to be feasible to create grading on the easement.
You'd need, you'd need the neighbor's signature to do that.
Well, yeah, but I, I would think that they would agree to that, and they could get the house lower.
Well, let's find out. Can I ask, John, you want to come up? And let's just ask a question here, who's speaking for the, for the neighbors here? If we were to, come on up, Cliff, I'm sorry, come on up. So if we were to approve the planning commission recommendation, does that mollify the concerns that you have?
Well, not completely, but it's a good start.
What's left on the table after we were to do that?
We talked about the, the top, as far as the, all the way around, as far as the view, then taking out all the stonework and things of that nature that would interfere with that, and also...
It's not overreach now. That's not overreach, we're making a deal here.
Three feet would be helpful. I thought it was a place that we could start, that we could sit and negotiate, but when he told me that they weren't going to go that, that, that turned it off really completely. But we did, but we, we did say and have said all along, okay, if he would accommodate on the height, we would accommodate, or, excuse me, they would accommodate in the easement area to be able to grade down to get what he needed. That's, that would not be a stop if we could settle on the height, but the, the height is, is really a big problem.
Okay, thank you.
A question that came up and I forgot to ask. The, there was a question about why, after the planning commission asked, that the proposed covenant came back without the neighbors having to approve.
Well, once again, I think the real focus here is the overall sizing and massing of, of the building. You know, this is a voluntary covenant that he's agreeing to enter into, so adding additional terms of that nature, in my opinion, would not be appropriate. You know, really, the focus here is on the overall size and massing of the, of the property.
All right, thank you. Any other comment? Steve, Councilmember Zansky?
Steve's fine, too. My applicant come forward here so we can talk a little bit. So you heard the conversation that we just had about the horse trading that Keith wants to do in order to get the grading of the easement, but maybe in exchange for lowering the height. Is there any willingness on your part to do that? Through further discussions with the applicant? Because, I mean, I understand that this gentleman owns one property, he may speak to the other property owners, but until they actually agree, there's no agreement.
That's correct.
And so you'd have to talk to all of them and come to agreement with all of them. That's not going to happen here tonight at this meeting. So I would make a motion to continue it again, if that's what you wanted. Otherwise, you're going to be at the mercy of the opinions that you've heard here tonight.
I think that we would be very happy to do that if the council would have some participation in those discussions and would put some stipulations around those discussions. The difficulty that, that we had when we met in the meeting that's being referred to was that we were told that even with a three-foot reduction, the neighbors would not be happy, they wanted another three feet. So that's, that's where the discussion stopped. And so if we're saying, if we were willing to give the three feet per the planning commission, could we go back and negotiate an encroachment agreement with the neighbors voluntarily? Yes, I think we'd be very open to that. We've always wanted to resolve the issues with our neighbors, and it's been, it's been challenged.
All right, then, I will, just, just quickly, I, I think that since this is up on appeal and it's kind of quasi-judicial matter, it wouldn't really be appropriate for the council to interact directly with them and try to settle this. But city staff could help facilitate that if, if you'd like, or perhaps our office or City Manager's office. Okay, will you accept a staff member? Okay. So then I'm going to make a motion to continue this for 30 days, or two meetings. Two meetings enough for you guys to work this out? I'll make a motion to continue to...
Again, and again, and again, everything you...
Ma'am, ma'am, it would not be...
Wait, wait, but...
Well, you may not like the decision of the council, I mean, if you'd rather just take your chances, if you're saying you don't want to be cooperative, I'm trying to help you folks here. Because I'm not, I'm asking, just like I asked them, if you guys are not willing to compromise, you're, excuse me, sir, the representative said that he was willing to talk, but he felt that the, the negotiations broke down or whatever. I'm saying, hey, if you think you can negotiate a little bit further and everybody can come to an agreement that the council can support, great. If not, then let's just take the vote tonight and take your chances. Everybody takes their chances. You've heard differing opinions here up on the council. I don't even know how it's going to come out. Okay? So I'm willing to extend myself to make that motion, if that's what you want. If you're going to tell me about all your travel plans, or this person's going to the hospital or that, I can't deal with that. We can't put it out six months. Yes, sir. Please step to the podium and talk.
Since this, as you, as you said, came to the council at the last second, we were given this a minute before the meeting, can we be granted some, some, we've constantly been asked to bend over for them, can, there has to be some penalty for the fact that they brought these things in at the last minute for no one to review. And had we had a chance to review them, perhaps we could have done that. So I'm asking, can we find a date that's convenient for all? That's all I'm asking.
All right, two weeks? Can you do two weeks?
I said 30 days.
I know.
June 12th is about 30 days.
June 12th?
Can we have six weeks?
Can we do six weeks?
Six weeks. After the 15th, anytime.
Uh, Council, um, city attorney?
I, I think whichever day you agree to, just as long as the applicant's on board with that date and going out that far, I just like to confirm with them.
June 26th?
I just want to make sure, and I'll, and I'll, first of all, the contents of the, everything that's been presented to you this evening were in the staff report and were part of the public review process, so. But, yes, we'd be willing to work, we want to do that, we've been wanting to do that, but I'm concerned if one of the parties that's been leading these efforts is going to be gone the entire time that we're being continued, I'd like to understand his schedule, because if he's leaving tomorrow and he's not getting back till June 13th...
Well, that's a good point.
Yeah, is he going to be here to work with us, or is he going to be on Europe?
Who's going to be able to negotiate?
Yeah, I'm, I've been retained as council, and we can, we can orchestrate that.
Then what's wrong with them doing it for 30 days?
Because it's one thing to do negotiations and being contacted via telephone, it's another thing to have kind of the finality of it and the authority, and we'd like to have the parties all present.
All right, well, you got six weeks. I, I'm going to make my motion, you guys support it or not, I move that we continue the item to June 26th, where we will make a decision. Just like the boardroom with Mr. Trump, will be someone fired, so.
I'll, I'll second that motion, but I'll make a comment along the way. I am very tired of hearing this item. We will make a decision the next time. I don't know how the rest of my council members feel about this, but I'll declare for myself. I was right on the edge of voting for the proposal that Mr. Guida brought in here. So all you neighbors, understand that. That's where I'm at. Now, he's made a lot of changes, and this, this assertion that he's made, hasn't listened to anyone, is just poppycock. His proposal has changed significantly. Let's be clear about that. And I don't care if you shake your hand, head, that is my perception here, that that has changed significantly. If this comes back to us with the change in height to the 67, I'm going to vote for that. And I don't care what the neighbors say about other changes. So I'm suggesting to the neighbors that they better be of a mind to be compromising for a solution here, because they may get a vote next time that they don't like. I can't be any more clear than that.
No, no, all right. Councilwoman Diggle?
Well, first, I appreciate Councilman Rosansky's effort to continue this, and I think in light of the fact that all the materials weren't available in a timely manner, I think is very appropriate. However, I'm one vote, and where I'm at is, I can't make the findings for a lot merger, so I don't see how, where the neighbors have to compromise at all. So if you're just talking about my vote, I can't make the findings. That's how I see it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mayor Protamperi?
Well, I'll just chime in this, too, because I'm with, with Councilman Hen. This is going back because I think we have the opportunity in exchange for three feet to resolve the easement issue and the access to the garage, and that's the deal that I expect to see. Not that we're going to start with, we'll take three feet off, and then we'll take three more feet off, or that we're going to come back with some other stuff. We heard a lot of nonsense today about historical structures and stuff like that, and I don't expect to hear any of that again. And if we can't get a deal by the time we come back, I'm prepared to vote for the applicant's recommendation at 70.2.
Anybody else want to chime in? All right, then, let's vote.
Just real quick, I, I would just like to confirm the applicant's waiving any time, time limits? That you're waiving any time limits that may be applicable here?
Yes, Cor Newman, for the applicant, we're waiving our time limits. Thank you.
All right, please vote. The motion to continue passes unanimously. Once again, we do not decide. All right. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to current business, the creation of a charter update commission. If you could please continue your conversations outside, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a proposal to reinstitute a charter review commission to deal with a couple of items, some cleanup items. There's a, there's a list of proposed items in the back of the proposal, but, but essentially, these are non-substantive, most of them. They deal with creating efficient operations for the city, they would improve the clarity and/or reflect current practices that are different from what's in our charter, they would remove provisions that conflict with existing law or that should track more closely with existing law. The difficulty in this is that you have a very short time period to actually put together a charter review commission, to ask it to do its work and review these and make other recommendations to you. So part of this proposal is that you waive a portion of your policy A2, and that you call for applications if you so desire tonight, so that we can actually form the charter review commission immediately. They will have about eight weeks in which to do their work.
All right. Any questions of staff?
Yeah, Leilani, maybe you can tell us a little bit about, more about the process of the applications coming in and how we're going to get them, because there is, it is a compressed timeframe here, and normally we might have a little bit more time between closing of the application period and the, making the recommendations to council.
Yes, timelines of...
Go ahead, go ahead.
It's a bit challenging, but starting tomorrow morning, I will be posting on the web and on our boards and other locations, probably the library, the, the notice. And then we'll also have an ad in the Daily Pilot on Saturday. As applications are received, the review committee will be receiving the applications, but if desired, I can also give it to council at the same time. It, it would be council's decision. But I, I think as I'm, since the timeline is so short, I would be providing them as received. Okay.
Can you publish that in the Current as well?
Pardon?
The Current as well? The Current.
Oh, in the Current? I could, I can publish as desired, yeah.
Yeah, what is the Current?
Or the Independent?
The Independent. I, you know, because it is such a narrow timeframe, we want to get it out as widely as possible, as quickly as possible.
Okay, Councilwoman Diggle?
Yes, it seems as if a discussion of, that we want to update the charter and that what we want to update about the charter would be a precursor to forming a committee. So I kind of had some questions about the, some of the content of what these recommendations are for amendment, if you could kind of go through those. It's the first time I've seen them. I think they're on page exhibit two.
I think most of these are cleanup, things where we have inconsistencies that have been brought to our attention.
But, for example, it says Section 702, appointments, appointment terms. This section is proposed to be amended as part of the city's current effort to reform and streamline. What do you mean by that?
Well, I don't think that, I, I think that this is still just kind of a proposal of different things that we're, we're looking at. Of course, it'd be a council direction as far as what actually ended up being changed in the charter, when what the committee basically decided was appropriate. But I think what they're looking for there is to make sure that, that there's a streamlined process so that the terms for appointment are all the same for boards, commissions, and committees, and, and that the process for appointing them is streamlined, so that perhaps it goes a little bit quicker than it does sometimes now with the processes currently in place.
Okay, so we're not proposing to remove term limits, but just the staggering or the non-staggering of appointments?
Yeah, I think the, the big issue is you're looking to make sure that there's consistency among the boards and commissions.
Okay. And then Section 602, city attorney, what's sort of driving the change there? It says this section is proposed to be amended to provide guidance and charter interpretations. Is there something about what's happening currently that needs to be refined?
Yeah, I don't actually think that that's, that's something that's going to be proposed. I'm not sure how that got into the exhibit. I, I didn't actually get a chance to review this staff report before it was put in the agenda, but I don't think there'll be any modifications to the city attorney powers, at least that I would be proposing.
Okay. So we would want to strike that from the, because as I read this document, the, whoever appointed is limited to a discussion of these items.
Well, does, does somebody on staff, can somebody on staff explain that a little more? Apparently the city attorney can't. Somebody wrote that.
Right.
What, what does it mean?
Yeah, I think that, I think in general, I don't think it would be limited to those sections, I think those were kind of a sampling of, of what was being proposed as far as items that might want to be addressed. I think, I think that it's been noted over the last year that there's a lot of cleanup items that, there's some inconsistencies in the charter as far as what, how it reads and how business is actually conducted. I think those were really designed to try to clean up those items.
Let me take a step back, maybe I can help a little bit. Actually, our city manager, who just came in, spent a lot of time simply walking through the charter and noting areas that may have a conflict with law or, or causing difficulties in practice. They don't necessarily mean, and then they're notated here, they don't... They don't necessarily mean, and then they're notated here, they don't necessarily mean that the charter review commission would necessarily include them, but they're for review of the charter review commission for consistency. And city attorney's office and city manager's office would assist in walking through the charter. This is by no means meant to be a complete list, nor an examination of these provisions today, but these will all come back to you after the citizens' review committees have a chance to look at them. And we don't have a strikeout version or any kind of version like that to speak from today. We weren't intending to go through each of these items.
Okay, well, somewhere...
Simply to set up a process.
Right, somewhere in this, though, I read that the purview of the commission or the committee is limited to what council puts on the table, that they're not going to wander into new areas. And so if there's areas here that there's no valid explanation as to why we want people to discuss them, I'm wondering why they're being put forward.
Perhaps when we come back at the next, if the council decides they want to move forward with a, with a committee today to look at the charter, maybe we can come back with a more comprehensive list of what sections, as well as a little more detail. Would that, would that be helpful to the council?
Yeah, because I see things, you know, the city attorney's interpretation of a charter, I'm really looking for some sort of an explanation of what we're talking before we begin down this path.
Yeah, I guess I'd second that, that it's, and it seems to me there's time to do that. I mean, we could move forward tonight and then come back with a council item that in fact is designed to give guidance to the commission for what we want them to look at. Something more than generalities here, and so why not have a council item in that respect that gives that guidance? And then the commission, I think this provides for the commission to, in light of that guidance, if they stumble across something else they think we should look at, they can recommend back to council to approve additional items to review. Is that, is that the desire here?
Yeah, I think that sounds like a great idea.
Okay. Then I would just nominate for future thought at least, one other item, and that is that I noted in the Planning Commission minutes, that the Planning Commission apparently got into a fairly extended discussion of our capital improvements plan. And I could be wrong about this, but it seems like it might have gone beyond just whether or not it was consistent with the general plan, which was what the charter says. And so I'd be curious if somebody would have a recommendation about that in terms of, because that seems like a duplication of effort, you know, between council and the planning commission. So that's just one further suggestion.
Councilwoman Diggle?
So probably a timing issue. When would the council be, I guess, defining what we're going to be looking at here? When do you, is that next meeting, or how do you see that taking place?
I would think that at the next meeting, maybe we could flush that out and come up with a more comprehensive list and have that ready for you at the next meeting, if that's acceptable.
Great. And so if the council had additional ideas to offer, we'd do so at that time? Okay.
I think some of the confusion that Leslie has here, and I guess it is a little bit contradictory, is that Section 5 of the resolution, I mean, at first, it says the commission may also review the city charter and make recommendations to the city council for expanding the list, but the commission shall not, however, expend resources on pursuing issues that have not been approved or reviewed by the council. So is it that we're going to start meeting, and if something bubbles to the surface, we're going to bring it to council to see if we want to pursue it? Is that, was that what it was intended there by that language? Because we are on a limited time schedule here, and there's not going to be a lot of time to go back and forth.
I think what I suggested was fairly clear. I mean, you know, at the next council meeting, the council will provide a list for the commission to consider. If the commission wishes to consider something beyond that list, it can recommend back to council to approve an additional item.
That's what we did on the last time we tried to make a session. Sometimes the council said yes, and then the council said no. No, I understand that. I'm just saying, in the limited timeframe, I'm just asking staff if that's what they're thinking about here, is that we're going, you know, exactly what you just said. But there's not going to be months to go back and forth between city council and the commission.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we clarify the items so that, exactly as Councilmember Hen said, that you come up with a comprehensive list of what you'd like them to look at next time, and then when they meet, if they come up with other ideas, kind of put all those together and then bring them back to the city council with consideration.
Fairly quickly.
In a timely manner, yeah.
I'll move the item in a second.
Is there public comment on this item?
Madam Mayor Gardner and members of the commission, council, my name is Jim Mosher. This is a resolution, and what Councilwoman Diggle was referring to is Section 5, which says the commission is empowered and instructed to review the issues set forth on Exhibit 2, and you do have an Exhibit 2. So apparently, you're planning to make a new resolution at your next meeting. Madam Mayor, when you took office on December 13th, you reminded both those of us out here in the public and your fellow council members that those who cease trying to be better run the risk of ceasing to be good. I took your advice to heart, and I would submit to you that in this matter, we are in grave danger of ceasing to be good. The city charter is a document by which the people control the council and the staff. It is not a document by which the council controls the people. When the council starts tinkering with the charter, the people have to sense danger. In November of 2009, the six of you who were on the council at that time sat here at a study session, considering it much more carefully, if in a six-month timeframe, it would be feasible and wise to consider 15 carefully considered changes that staff wanted to make to our charter. That process was apparently so wildly unsuccessful that just two years later, we're back here considering not 15 changes in six months, but if you count Exhibit 2, 42 changes, and those that are said to be non-substantive, or not all non-substantive, 42 changes in six weeks. I do not call that trying to be better. In November and December of last year, we went through the embarrassing exercise of trying to make an overly hasty appointment to the Planning Commission, only to discover that state law wisely prevents us from doing that. Six months later, tonight, we're back here with staff recommending an appointment schedule that requires you to violate exactly the same law. You cannot legally make the appointments at your meeting two weeks from tonight because the matter will, that will only be nine days, not the 10 working days from the date on which the announcement is posted in the clerk's office. I don't call that trying to be better. On Valentine's Day of this year, February 14th, when you were considering modifications to the Special Events Advisory Committee, I stood here cautioning you that I thought we were ignoring the provisions of our charter, that the people of this city expect you to create advisory boards by ordinance, not by resolution, as you did then, and as you're proposing to do with this resolution tonight. I'm sure many of you would like that restriction removed from our charter, but only the voters have the power to do that. On Valentine's Day, our city attorney asserted that Mr. Mosher was confusing committees with commissions. Well, this staff report identifies the body you're creating tonight as a charter update commission. And we have computers nowadays and word processors. I went through this. The word "commission" is used 62 times in this report. And I can think of no advisory commission more important to the people of this city than one chosen to advise you on revising our city's constitution. Tonight, I'm waiting to hear the city attorney tell us that you can ignore that because a commission to review the charter is like CAC, a body of so little importance that the charter doesn't apply to it. If he says that, and if you believe that, I don't call that trying to be better. Our charter also says that citizens' advisory panels, such as this, that you create, will organize themselves and appoint their own chair. The resolution staff has prepared for you implies that the mayor will be appointing the chair of this advisory commission. This is text recycled from two years ago. That is contrary to our charter. It was contrary to our charter when we did that two years ago, and I don't see how repeating past mistakes is in the interest of doing, trying to do better. These may all seem like trivialities of no importance to you, but the truth, and the bigger truth, is that there simply isn't enough time to do what staff is proposing to do in the interval allotted. It's certainly not possible to do it in a way that would do credit to our city. Those of you who wish to demonstrate to the public that you sincerely wish to do better are compelled to vote no on this. Thank you.
Just briefly, as to the legal issues raised by Mr. Mosher, the 10-day posting requirement that he's referring to is on the Mati Act, and that relates to unscheduled vacancies and not initial appointments. So the Mati Act's not applicable to this action item. The term "commission" was lifted basically from the Election Code, Section 9255A, and in essence, it doesn't have the same meaning as "commission" under our charter. I think it might be best to call this a committee as opposed to a commission. So with the approval, maybe we can change the name from "commission" to "committee", because "commission" under, under the charter has a lost special meaning, whereas this is in essence of a committee that can be formed a resolution.
You want to amend the...
I would so amend.
All right. Any further discussion? Please vote.
So are we proposing to approve that resolution, or forming a committee with appointments?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's a committee, it's a committee that's coming back with a yet-to-be-determined scope of what they're looking at?
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll, we'll replace the Exhibit 2 with what it is you direct them to do. So the motion is the recommended items, but we'll make a modification at the next, at the next meeting to replace Exhibit 2.
Subject to confirmation at the next committee meeting, or council meeting.
Thanks, I'd just like to know what I'm voting on.
Okay, prior to reading the vote, and Councilmember Hen needs to vote, I have to read the title, 2012-32, Resolution of the City Council of Newport Beach, Creating a Charter Update Committee of Limited Duration and Focused Jurisdiction that will be discussed, confirmed at the next meeting. With that, the motion carries unanimously. And, all right.
Motion for reconsideration?
Let me read that personally. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by the council members who voted for the prevailing side. Thank you. And now, close the meeting in memory of Alan Beinfour, Newport resident who passed away on April 17th. He was born in Kansas and spent his childhood in Michigan, Arizona, and Florida. After high school, he was awarded an academic scholarship and attended Cornell University. Upon graduation, he accepted the job from Caterpillar Inc., and the company subsequently brought him to Southern California. He eventually joined Kidder Peabody and Company in 1988, excuse me, in 1988, co-founded Canterbury Capital Services and served as the firm's president and CEO. A decade later, he co-founded Knightsbridge Asset Management, a portfolio management company. He served as president of the Cornell Alumni Association of Southern California, on the advisory council to the Cornell Financial Engineering Manhattan MFE program, and served on UCI's Foundation's Investment Committee. He also led the Architectural Committee in designing the new St. Matthews Anglican Catholic Church on Old Ford Road. He also once served as chairman of the Philharmonic Society of Orange County Board of Directors and was granted its highest honor, the Golden Baton Award. In addition to his love of classical music, he also enjoyed German stamp collecting. Al is survived by his wife Linda, his three children, Allison Stanley, Nicholas Beinfour, and Kurt Beinfour, five grandchildren, his brother Ed, and many friends. Services have been held, so we close the meeting in his memory. And the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.